YouTube account, which is linked to our website. We ask that those on Zoom not involved in discussion, meet themselves. And stop their video to prevent disruption during the public comment period at the outset of the meeting or during the public comment period of a public hearing agenda item. Please use the raised hand feature if you would like to speak. You will be called on and asked to unmute, begin your video. And state your name and the street that you live on for the record. Once you people do your statements, please mute yourself and stop your video again. We ask that you try to limit your comments to two minutes per person for agenda item. If you require any assistance or experiencing technical difficulties, please use the private message feature. If this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately end the call and send instructions on a new meeting via email.
Okay, we got Shannon.
And also I would like to announce the Council on Roadback is present on Zoom. Due to her. She's been under the weather and also did you, you, you mentioned that. Anyone in Zoom land should mute their video. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start with the public comment period. Then a resident, yes, citizen has a comment. Please. Have to the podium or is, is anybody on? You know, I, okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is consideration. Of approval of the agenda is presented. Is there a motion?
So.
I hear Paul, so a second.
Yeah.
I think I saw it. Tell us. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor?
Oh, no.
All this, thank you so much. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Okay, I saw. On this first. And we have, we have approved the consent agenda as written. And I saw a second. Is your discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor? Uh, all this, thank you. Uh, the next item is a permit application submitted by. Marion Rosenthal and Michael Phillips for the removal of four trees. At the property located at fifty five twenty two Greystone Street, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, so the applicants uh, reached out to our arborist and are requesting that. Four trees be removed at the property. They uh, have stated that they are planning. Uh, currently working with landscaping company to plant new trees that will. Um, that are slightly smaller and will. Uh, unless hazardous. They are also working with the landscaping company on indoor landscaping. For any specifics on the trees, I would turn it over to the arborist if there's any questions.
Okay, Dr. Feather, do you have any? If you, have you have anything to say if you become to the podium so people can see you?
No, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a four trees. Uh, Elm tree, um, ten inches in diameter, but it's. Heavily leaning over the corner of the property. There's this spruce. It's leaning towards the house. That's a. Thirteen inches. There's a hem, hemlock in the back corner that's um, has about fifty percent of the normal canopy. And there's a tulip copper that has uh, germining roots. And also has a decay in the main trunk when it has. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Council President, Sir Co, do you have any questions?
Uh, just. Like to know, what are the trees that are being planted to replace them? Has that been determined?
Uh, the applicant has arrived. Uh, are they able to answer that question?
Should, yeah, sure.
Would you be able to answer that question?
Oh, if, I guess, if you, if you can come to the voting place and identify yourself.
Any of the canopy trees?
Okay, um, my name is Mary Rosenthal. I don't know if I'm this way or that, sorry. Oh, uh. And um, I'm at fifty five twenty two uh, Greystone Street. And um, I've hired a landscape architect to um, uh. You know, through the whole grounds, um. And uh, the landscape architect was recommended to me by Sarah Morris over on Dorset Avenue. Um, uh, so I asked the question, uh, and she said there were seven uh, trees that are um, going to be on the perimeter. And one, this is all the backyard, on one, one of those seven, I think, will be in the yard itself, and she called them um, uh. Medium sized to small side ornamental uh, native trees.
All right, thank you very much. Did you, did you want to comment at all since you're the applicant? When the before, did you want to have anything?
Um, to, to what the arborist said?
And, and.
Um, I, I wasn't here to hear him, but we discussed it. One was leaning way over the house. Um, one was underneath the uh, other trees, one was. Um, on our property, but outside of the fence line that was also leaning, and another one that he recommended. Um, so I don't know if he described it that way, but.
Thank you. Thank you. As well.
How should I say?
Yeah, you might as well, yeah. Okay, Councilor?
No.
That's a member. Councilor Roback, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Did, is anyone, does any citizen wish to comment or get anyone online? I see any online. Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Mary. Council? Are you sure? Do you, do you want? Are you ready to make a motion? Does anybody have any? That's they want to raise? Which is.
No, I said, we look quite, they are appropriate for move and the applicants are taking. We last give out that, so. It happens.
Okay, okay, so I'll take a stab at it. I, I propose that the council approved the permanent application submitted by Mary Rosenthal and Michael Phillips to remove the four trees of property located by twenty two Greystone Street. Is that Mr. Town, Mr. Town, is that? It is legally. Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all this in favor? Uh, all this, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, the next item is the permit application submitted by Guido Racioli. Right? Yes. I know I did it before. It should mean a sign, Racioli. For the construction of the new home at the property located at forty nine oh five Cumberland Avenue. So we will begin the hearing. Today's May sixth, twenty twenty four. This is a hearing. Before the town of Somerset for a permit application at the property located at forty nine oh five Cumberland Avenue. To consider the demolition of the existing house, construction of a new single family home. Curb cut driveway and apron, removal of six trees and placement of a dumpster. We ask that residents be limited. To one comment each minute, who limit two minutes at a time. The town manager will call on residents by listed name with the last four digits of the phone number if no name is provided. When you speak, please state your name and street before you make your comment. When your time is up, you will be asked to please finish your thought. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. After that, the applicant will present the application or comment on the reports. Next, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. And then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Filing the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision. And a permit shall be, not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no option is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin the hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wrote a memo conceding this, and I will not read the whole thing, but the highlights. Is I recommend approval of the permit submitted by the applicants for forty nine oh five Cumberland. They have, they first submitted their plans and application in one July twenty twenty three, and since then have worked with the staff diligently. Uh, through a variety of revisions and code changes. Uh, for our administrative requirements, they have uh, are in compliance with our administrative requirements. Included parking plan, house number certification, and the town delivery notice neighbors ten days prior to this hearing. For our building regulations, our town engineer, that Low Meyer, has reviewed the plans and confirmed the compliance of town code. Notably, setback requirements and building height restrictions have been measured. Uh, tree care protocols, the town arborist has reviewed the plans and offered chief protection and chief replacement plans for the project. For stormwater management guidelines, the town stormwater consultant, Valen Consultants and Designers Incorporated, has reviewed the plans and confirmed compliance with town stormwater management and code required requirements. Notably, the project actually exceeds the uh, requiring stormwater collection. Uh, I'll turn it over to Doug. Are, can you, are you there, Doug? Didn't have anything to add?
Uh, good evening. Uh. According to the site plan, the established building line is twenty seven point two feet from the front property line. One setback for the proposed house would be twenty seven point three feet. Eight point three feet on the left side, eleven point seven feet on the right side for a total of. Combined side yard setbacks of twenty feet, and the rear setback will be fifty eight point four feet. Uh, those all meet the town's requirements for setbacks. According to the site plan, the peak roof will be thirty two point eight two feet, and the mean will be twenty seven point nine seven feet. Both heights also comply with the town code. Uh, the proposed building coverage will be twenty point five percent of the site, which complies with the code. Uh, they also have an application for a dumpster, a toilet, park, and the parking plan and a boundary survey were submitted. I recommend the council approve the demo permit, the building permit, the dumpster permit. Drive away apron permit and a permit for two HVAC units. Uh, the town should not issue the permit until the plans have been revised by Montgomery County Department of Permitting. I also recommend the applicant provide a, the town with a certified wall check. And a certified building height survey, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Feather, would you like to comment on the tree care?
So the applicant and I worked on this stuff. It's um. The case that drew since July. And um. Um. I made a report, there's uh, twelve trees to remove. Um. And um. He had, the applicant has also submitted a um. Um, uh, reforestation permit. Which includes uh, two Japanese trees as street trees in the front. And uh, the report statement is in compliance with the. Request in my report for the number of trees and types of trees. Some of the trees were removed early by mistake. And I noted that in the report. Uh, as far as tree protection. Uh, the first plan we looked at, uh, pretty much was going to. Not allow for the protection of the trees in the back. And there's some nice old trees in the back. Um. Uh, he worked with me and, and um, modified the, the first plan to move. Structure up the detached trees. So I think that's important on this lot to do those trees protecting. Um, so that's the end of my report.
That concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, definitely. We will now have the applicant's opening statement and presentation of the application. And whoever's going to come forward and identify themselves.
Good evening. Backboard from the law firm, Stalzer Courage, on behalf of the applicants. Um, I'll be very brief tonight. Um, we're in agreement with the staff's recommendation. Simply appreciate. Um, all their time and assistance for to make revised plans, um, and recommending approval of all the permits. Um, Guido and Charmaine have been working on this process for a pretty extensive period of time. Um, so they are excited to be here tonight and to hopefully, uh, first, you know, come to a resolution and obtain their permits and recognition of those permits. Um, they're former residents of the town, um, and they live just around the corner now, but they're looking forward to moving back. Um, to this property or place, um, in the near future. Um, I also wanted to note for the record that they submitted a letter, um, that sort of outlines the process that they went through to get to this point. Um, and there's been a lot of obstacles and challenges that they've had to respond to that were beyond their control. Um, known, numerous changes to the town, which required them to go back to their, they have very good consultants. Their architect and civil engineer, but nonetheless, they incurred significant costs, um, having to revise. Uh, the plans that were in conformance with the town requirements when they started this process. Um, so I think it's important to note that as part of this record. Um, they made significant changes to the, to the plan in response to comments. Um, from their neighbor, uh, the letter from late March, um, the, the two principal concerns were the building height and the detached garage. Um, and the detached garage had a retaining wall that was supporting it, so they reduced the building height, uh, and they removed the detached garage, garage altogether. Um, even though the, they can comply with the setback if they wanted to and maintain that detached garage. Uh, that's something I talked with your attorney about, um, under the code, so that, that was a significant concession that they made. Um. The, we've received some other comments, um, from the neighbor that are sort of more subjective and not based on the town code, and we. You know, acknowledge and appreciate everybody has an opportunity to comment through this process. Um, but we do think that their plans comply with all town and county requirements. They will revise their county permit, um, and obtain that approval before they hit the town permit. Um, but it's really important that we get a recommendation tonight, um, so that they have the certainty that they need. Um, and we can avoid any additional delays and expenses, um, in this process, as they, they're really eager to move forward. Um, so with that, I will, um, just say that, uh, we're respectfully requesting that the town approve or recommend approval of their permit. Tonight, and we're available to answer any questions that arise, and I think the civil engineer is on the floor.
And could you, um. Could he, um, put his video on and tell us his name?
Yeah. We had a.
Rich and Kelly? Let's see.
Yes, can you hear me? This is Rich Ingram.
Yeah, can, can you, um. Show us your.
I was trying to get the video on there, sorry.
There you go. Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. You can just sit there. So, Council President, sir, do you have any questions? Yes, uh, tree removals. Can you provide some background insights into what happened?
Yes, so.
Yes.
That's all. So there's one tree that was recently removed, and I believe it was some, the number two, the Japanese maple. And, um, we don't try, they actually weren't aware that it had been removed until, uh, we received the neighbor from, um, Ms. Reddenfeld, the neighbor's attorney. Um, they actually filed a police report, I believe, on Friday. Um, they had, it's interesting, they received a number of requests from people. Over the last six months that were interested in trees, particularly that one, so, um. I think, we, we think that somebody stole that tree. Um, I guess it has some value, which is unfortunate. The other uh, trees that were removed without permit, um, their contractor made the mistake. Uh, does not authorize to go ahead with that, and as soon as they found out that that occurred, they asked that all operations stop until the permit was issued. Um. So that's something I think that they, you know, are apologetic for, but it was beyond their control. Somebody else unfortunately made a mistake.
Thank you. None of the good questions. Thank you, Councilor.
Uh, yeah. I have other questions about the um, driveway you put in, which I understand is impermeable because the slope. Is more than five percent, that's okay. It, it's just, it's sloping down to the house is the point. Um. Have you plans for where the water goes because you don't want it to go to your house?
So. The water, if you look at the current site plan, we do have a trench drain. That the driveway is pitched to, that trench drain is then connected into the rear stormwater planter box, so that drainage from the driveway is picked up. Then taken to the planter box in the rear of the property.
Okay, thank you very much. No further questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor.
I just have another tree question. You said that, um. There were requests about the Japanese maple?
Yeah.
Was that, what does that mean?
Like neighbors or people in the community?
Falling going, can I have your, your maple?
People were asking for a couple of their trees.
Because they knew they were going to renovate.
Yes.
So they then, because normally we don't get, uh, nobody ever calls me for my trees, you know, so.
So I, I think, um, the council was telling me that this has happened in neighboring jurisdictions before, where there's a construction site and people see it. And they'll just come and take the plants because they think it's free for all.
Um, so was this a big tree?
It wasn't. It was a small tree.
Okay, and did they cut it down or they dig it out?
They said that they dig it out.
And nobody saw that happen? No neighbors? This is like in the middle of the night? We have tree neighbors, you know?
We asked that, they asked their contractor because they were worried that contractor made another mistake, and they assured us. They did not take it, so apparently the Japanese maple, they're pretty valuable, at least that's what. What I've learned is not much, my experts.
They are, they are very.
Um, so I think somebody stole it, which is unfortunate. Um, but I, they would have been open to relocating. Trees that they were going to remove as part of this application. I think my neighbor down the street, somebody had asked our contractor about some of the trees, so.
So all the trees that were taken down mistakenly by, by the contractor, they're going to be, they're, we're going to go put in new trees.
Or replacing, yeah.
All be replaced, yeah.
Okay. We're gonna be needing for that.
All right, thank you.
Is it?
That's it.
That's right.
I have a question for Dr. Thales. So if you, we are proposing the removal of sixteen. And then along with the three trees that were, two of which were moved. By accident and one of which was stolen. Together, those four trees formed. Seems to me some problem for green plants, but you, this property is an ex-property. Is there, is you, the reason you're not recommending a reforestation along that property now?
Um. They, accident, was there?
You see what I'm saying? Should I repeat what I'm saying? So twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen gone. Sixteen being. Requested for removal. All four are on one side and potentially form. Some form of green fencing, assuming, I don't know. So I'm just wondering, does your reforestation? Recommendation? Would it take them to the situation or would it take them to completely remove? Would you like to revise it?
Well, what he did was submit a plan. That took the end.
Yes.
Okay, so he does have one old trees next to the.
For the back there, the, the three in the back, I see. But what about the ones?
He wanted to modify and put something. That, you know, here. What's your job?
Okay. A question to the applicant. Would there be any openness to planting trees further up? Where, um. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah, yes, so, um, overall on the property, there are twenty one trees.
Yes.
It's not like. Like what a number of trees.
Yes.
And then, uh.
And, and you know why I'm focusing on those. They, you know, they, they potentially form a, a green fencing. Two of them came down by mistake when it was stolen. Out of your hands. Is there a way to provide some green fencing to restore it?
Yeah, so what I want to say is that. Uh, the goal, basically, goal number one was to save the two or three in the back.
Okay.
And then where, they were the biggest one.
Yeah.
And then, uh, um. We, uh, Dr. Feather asked me to stay seventeen feet away. Uh, from that. He told me also I could change the, the foundation and I could put, to be a little bit closer, but three weeks, I stayed seventeen feet away. But that allowed me to save another three trees.
Got it.
So on the right side, in the back, allowing me to save my. Then for, between me and the neighbor, I added three trees. And then, and more or less, the third tree is going to be close to the, basically the end of my, my neighbor's house. So basically, it creates a lot of separation between the two properties. Then, I in the front, I'm adding two, uh, canopy trees. That they are, uh, five inches in caliber. Because I want to make sure that when they, when this project is done. People don't, don't find itself, you know, the neighbors will have to wait. Uh, ten years to see like a bigger, so I, I'm.
It's likely bigger than average.
Yeah, bigger than average trees and, and so on. So, and overall. It's, I feel that that seemed to be, uh, quite enough, and then on, on the left side. I'm placing, uh, five trees, basically between me and the neighbor. Uh, to make sure that there is privacy between the two, because I'm taking down three trees. And I, I, I told Emily, Mrs. Danny, that, uh, that, you know. I was committed. To make sure that we have a privacy between the two properties and there is less space. On top of that, there's going to be a ornamental tree in the front behind the canopy trees. On the left side that I can use and pushing more towards the, basically our, uh. Basically, our property, I mean, between the two properties, so to create a little bit more of a vibe. And so, I mean, twenty one trees. It's quite a number. Okay. It's, it's, I. I stopped it.
I would just observe that if you look at the plan, like the majority of the massing of this building. Is, if there's an orbit that's closer to the other neighborhood, um, and with the removal of the garage, there's much more space along this shared property, property line that's. Free and clear, so it, it makes sense that they have that row of trees proposed on the other side of the house. You can look at it horizontally.
Thank you. I'll say my question. That's a, you expect it. Councilor Roback, do you have any questions?
Um, so how did, so I, I'm so confused, all right. This is why I'm not here. I'm like, have a cold, sorry, everyone. Um. So it seems like, you know, in all of this discussion, um, you know, it's, but that one of the trees that was really called into question was. About saving was from a neighbor who wanted to have the trees kind of saved on. That side of his property, and those seem to be the ones that were taken down. Without a permit, like how does that happen that, you know, we know that we live in a tree city and we obviously have a very, you know, um. Strong requirements for permitting and, and things like that, which you guys are aware of. From living there before, and then also from going through this process, which you say is, you know, very long. How does that happen that a contractor just takes down the trees that were maybe the ones that were in question of saving?
I, I would be speculating, I don't, I never spoke, I've seen this contractor before, but. I can tell you from the experience of working in the development industry, in these types of construction sites, that there's a lot of saves, remember?
And I want to add one more thing, at that, they, they, uh. The neighbors was focusing only on one tree for the other application, was the ten inch old tree that is in front. And, and we are proposing to put two maple trees, we don't, we. Mrs. Danny, we, we like maple trees, and we're proposing to put two maple trees, five inches each. So. If they're concerned, wouldn't that tree, I, I think, have been shot.
I just want you to know, you are not visible.
I'm sorry.
If you want to, you can come up here.
No, I, I can hear, so, um. So. Yeah, I mean, I understand, I, I just, I guess I just don't understand, you know. How these trees came down, um. You know, while we're going through this really long process, um, it just seems. Like a very big mistake. Um, so are there variances that are being required for this property?
No, they're not.
We, we had to revise the plans that were fully compliant. Because a variance would have been required because of changes in the law that occurred after we started.
What about the variance about the permeable driveway?
A variance is not required because it exceeds the slope requirement of a preconstruction.
Do, did that slope change during this process?
Right.
Uh, sorry. So the driveway, the front of the property is always sloped from the street to the back. Um, it's always had negative drainage. Going back toward the house, and we have the house as high as we can go based on height limits. And getting that grade, it's not possible. We do have a positive slope. We do have a positive slope on this apron from the front property line to the curb. Uh, you know, that's typical, but we're not able to get the house up high enough due to height requirements to get positive drainage from the driveway out. And, you know, given a two percent slope on the driveway is the minimum on the apron. And given the house and the height limits, we are exceeding that five percent, I can't grade it out so that it's less than five percent.
Okay, so just, is the house being raised from like where it sits currently?
So the existing house first floor is at two seventy-nine point four one, our proposed first floor is at two seventy-nine point five, so. We're a tenth higher than what the old house was with the first floor elevation.
And then how do you then, like for, as far as like water runoff, like how do you then control like? Cause you know, obviously they're, they're in a, a slope downhill. Um, going towards Little Falls from there?
Mm-hmm.
How do you manage that waterfall then, fu- going, i- if the house is even higher and it's obviously gonna take up so much more space? How, how does that water not run off to the side?
So for the driveway, as I mentioned, when somebody else asked the question, the driveway is being picked up with a trench drain at the end of it. That then connects that, takes that drainage from the driveway to the planter box. Does its job, outfalls in the back. Uh, the rest of the site has always gone to the rear, we really, we had not changed the drainage pattern of the property. We are picking up approximately nineteen hundred square feet of the roof area. Into the planter box in addition to the driveway. For a total of twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand fifty-six square feet. Um, and then we also have a portion of the dry, or the roof area being treated with a proposed dry well in the back left corner.
Okay, and so, uh.
And we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we also did flatten out the slope a little bit, so it's not as steep as what it was existing for the grade.
And so, so some of the water is gonna go to, cause, because basically, so is the water flow, then it goes. The water in the property goes, will go around to the back of the house and then down like kind of between probably Drummond and Cumberland in the back? And it goes down? The way that way to Little Falls?
It goes through our property as it did before and then cuts across. The, I'm trying to find the homeowner's name, who's directly behind us here, um, to the left. And I don't have it, but yes, it does continue across, you know, what's already a natural swell across those properties and then makes its way out.
Okay, so it makes it down to Little Falls, so there's not a drain in the back somewhere?
No, there is no drain in the back, we do have our planter box that's there for stormwater management for the driveway in the house. Uh, and then that does have an outfall in the back left corner.
And how long does it take for that to get filled?
I mean, that's a question. Are you asking like the volume, uh, capacity of this?
What would, like, does it, how much, do you know how much volume it holds?
Uh, I have another engineer who is actually did a design for this, Kelly, are you on this call? Can you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, we actually ran the analysis for the storm.
Kelly, can you say your name?
Say your name.
Oh, Kelly McCormick. Yes, Kelly McCormick, I'm an engineer at, um, the consulting with Rich Ingram.
Thank you.
And I, I'm, I got the notification of my video and I'm actually calling in, um, so I'm not gonna be able to do that. But I can still speak on behalf of the plan, um. We did run the analysis of the stormwater management with the drywall and the planter box and we were able to verify that the. The one year was gonna be completely stored. In the stormwater facilities and then the ten year and a hundred year was actually gonna be reduced with this, uh, stormwater. The extra stormwater management, so. We are actually proposing conditions that are gonna be better than existing conditions now, even though we are increasing the impervious.
Okay. Um, okay, I guess I have a question maybe for Ron, I don't know if this is the time, but don't they need a variance for the, the driveway?
So. A variance would be needed if. The pre-existing slope was less than five percent and through elevation changes, they were creating a slope greater than five percent. But I believe the testimony is that the slope has always been greater than five percent and is actually being flattened a bit. To slow the stormwater down, if I understood the testimony correct, this is a question. That I anticipated today as well and asked our manager, EJ Hardwick, if the, if the record. Reflected the pre-existing slope, I'm not able to discern that from the, 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 the plans, but. There was an email from the applicant. On March eighth, twenty twenty-four. I'm sorry, it's not the correct date. Indicating that the pre-existing slope was estimated to be ten percent, but I, I can't verify that with any geographic survey.
I, I think we would get computerated, because eh, both in ten percent is that. That's basically the old plan. The old plan, basically, we had a garage in the back and then it's a, a ten percent slope and, and so on. And then now, basically, we have a two car spot in front of the house. They, basically, the current slope there is eh, the, the current elevation there is two seventy-six. But eh, basically, they, they took our spot, eh, elevation is two seventy-seven. So if with two seventy-seven, basically, the slope is what, six point five, obviously, is a, is a. You know, we need all that.
Have you, ha- has anyone calculated the pre-existing slope?
I have not, no, I was not asked to provide that, sorry.
Are you able to do that now?
Uh. I mean, it's gonna take me a few minutes to open up the drawing in CAD and get it going, how long do we have?
If we have a human. I thought I will say.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. You'll get a chance. Councilor Roback, do you have further questions?
Um, no, not this time, thanks.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a second round because, um, I know.
Oh, yeah. Before we do a second round, may I suggest? The town manager has received three emails regarding this matter that we should mention, so that they can address the record.
Please.
The other parties may have an interest in knowing, please do. So the. Is this, this is the first one?
Yeah.
The first one's from Lisa Kachmal on Surry Street. And. I would just read it.
Good, what we have to do?
Hello, council, please include my comments and consideration of the hearing tonight on four nine oh five Cumberland. Apologies, I won't be able to make it in person. Namely, it is important to replace trees that were removed without approval, one. And to replace the negative impact that removal has had on overall stormwater retention environment with the loss of trees and two. Builders should not be able to non-comply with Somerset regulations in a way that benefits the builder and disadvantages neighbors. It is frustrating to hear that a professional builder is not complying with Somerset regulations. Considering the extensive works the town has done proactively to educate and inform on tree removals. This is a small town and there is simply no excuse, that was Senate four thirty-four PM today. Next is from David Brown on Cumberland. Good afternoon, since I moved here in twenty twelve, I've seen a gradual increase in the size of new houses, which take up a greater percentage of each lot. And increased stormwater problems. At one point, the, the design of the stormwater system in Somerset adequately took care of the stormwater. That resulted from all but the most intense storms, this is no longer the case. The town is aware of these issues and has taken steps to change the town codes, increase building restrictions. With this in mind, I think it's wise to strictly enforce the town building codes. And to only allow variances of atypical situations where they make sense and don't harm the surrounding neighborhood. The property at forty-nine oh five Cumberland is a typical lot and variances should not be granted. In addition, trees at forty-nine oh five Cumberland that were removed without permits. Should be replaced with trees that are of similar size and species. The penalties for removing the trees should be maximized. I'm a second generation builder specializing in historic reservation, restoration. And I've worked in Somerset since the early nineteen eighties. Please feel free to contact me in the future, if you have any questions, please use the Ami Eagle Network. And that was received at three twenty-eight PM. The final letter is from Lucy Freeman, who's here tonight, would you like me to read the letter or do you plan to testify?
Let's go to testify.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, but your letter has been received, for the record.
Hey, sir, may I receive the questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Council President, sir, can you? I have a question, question for our town manager. Uh, as, as we heard from some of the residents. The question's about tree removals. And what the, what's the, has the town done about those tree?
Yes.
Have we done anything about the tree?
Yes, so the town is going to issue a citation, I have started writing it, I just wanna make, confer with our county attorney before submitting it. But the punishment for each tree removal is a thousand dollars per tree and that is what they'll be cited.
So that's for the three trees, yourself.
Well, yes, yes.
You're gonna size it for a tree that they didn't love?
Not the big one, the fourth, the first four. That, that, that's my own question.
Counsel.
Yeah, but what I was trying to say earlier was relevant to the prior discussion, which is that I visited the current property, um, as it, as it now is, so I saw the slope as it now is there. And it's a noticeable enough slope, but I looked at it and said, that house must have flooding problems because it went straight down to the house with no drain at the moment. So I, it, it's a full importance five percent.
Exist, just, just.
Exist, existing slope is more than five.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, counsel.
He's parking back to all these trees. My real, my real concern and I wonder, how does a contractor, when you don't have a permit yet? He's working, you know, I guess you can work inside the house, you know, um, to do stuff, but. How does he come to this decision to go outside and just take down trees when he knows he doesn't have a permit to work? So it makes me a little concerned is what's for the future, what else is he going to do?
No, it makes sense, uh, I agree with you, uh, the only problem is that eh, this eh, tree contractor be working with me in the past, treating my. Eh, treating all my trees in the past. And then eh, he knew that I was going to have eh, was going to present to the prior eh, council meeting. And then eh, and we talked about, you know, I, I expressed the fact that, you know, it was important to me, for me to move forward. Eh, as soon as possible, so as soon as, you know, there was going to be the council meeting, and eh, I was expecting him to come as soon as possible. And he decided to go without even telling me. And then I found out at nine forty-five in the morning, eh, while I was in the meeting, they sent me a text. And they said, oh, how are you willing to pay? They said, pay for what? And then I realized what was going on, I called them and then I started rushing there and I told everybody that. Eh, it's. It's, you know, I couldn't do anything about, I mean, it's not like eh, the, the cutting for trees helped my application. And the last problem with the, with the, with the three being stolen, I mean, I don't, I don't think that any of this eh, events. Is helping me, my application in any way whatsoever.
You're just not tree lucky.
I mean, I haven't been lucky with this project, I mean, because eh, after seven months and I was working with them, with, with the town. And then eh, eh, the, the neighbor asked for my meeting to be postponed. Then the, the manager told me, oh, I have, I had a, I had a variance, then two days later, I had a second variance. Then eh, eh, three days later, by chance, I found out that eh, there was a problem with my permit, with my eh, fence. Eh, eh, and it's like, so I went from working for seven months. And being ready to finally present and get the, the approval to, you know, having to fix three eh, you know. Three issues, unexpected issues, so it's.
I'm sorry, it's been so difficult, I don't think we mean to make it.
Also, I'm sure it's not.
Do you have anything?
No, I'm sorry, thank you.
So this is Rich, can I, I got your slopes for you. The existing slope ranges from ten point four percent to eight percent. On either side of it. And we're raising it, we're now changing it to six point five percent, the driveway slope.
So I think that was counsel, I have a next question. We, we shall get a chance, shall get a chance, okay, so you're, okay, that's.
I don't have a question, you know, while it's extraordinary what happened with the trees. You make a good point, you know, when you deliberately put your own application. But I do think potentially restoring the tree cover, but the green fencing on that side is in your hands. You know, and that might be something to consider. As we move forward here, because why would it intend that to happen? Seems like some green fencing on that side, that's probably. And so that's what's on my mind as we go into deliberation. Uh, on, on, on this, I just wanna clarify, no variances, for the record, no variances.
Yes, for, for the record, no variances are on this application and, and the current proposal. Now that we have clarified the slope. Is within, uh, conforms to the current bill of duty. Yes, that's, okay, thank you.
I would like to add something, so eh, the trees that were cut eh, eh, inadvertently. Is that one was in front and then I'm putting a tree in front, it would kind of be three five inches, five feet forward, six feet over. And three were eh, small eh, somewhere in the middle. And then I'm putting three trees between me and the neighbor. More towards an area that allow privacy in the backyard. And so, from my perspective, I, I feel like I addressed. Eh, they, they, you know, this, this green barrier eh, eh, and, and so on.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes, okay, Councilor Roback, do you have further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, we will now open the floor for public comments. Well. Did you also say something? When did you want?
That's right.
Okay, so I think we're gonna call first, I'm, um, determining.
The record.
Welcome again.
Thank you, it's recorded in record, Michelle Wilton. I am, I am, saw the law office of Michelle's, in Rockville. And um. I, there are a few overarching things I'd like to say and then there are some very specific points that I'd like to make. First of all, um, we are happy that we're here in the posture tonight of the building height, um. Eh, being in compliance with the town code and in compliance with the setback standards. Uh, we had submitted a letter prior to the last hearing, it was our opinion that the new code applied. Uh, to this application and I, that it had to go back if we designed in order to satisfy the town code requirements. And so, um, we are happy to see that that has happened and was glad that, um, the issues that we're dealing with tonight are, are not. Uh, quite as significant as that one. That having been said, there are, uh.
Excuse me one second, I don't think you said it for the record.
Sorry, I'm, I'm representing Chris Corack and Irene Cortez at forty-eight twenty-three Cumberland.
I tried to make sure there was on the record.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, um, the, the, there are three things eh, specifically that I'd like to talk about tonight, one. Trees, uh, the second is a fence issue and then we have a question about a drainage in, in like the shown on the plans. So, uh, you know, there was a comment that, um, the trees had been moved early and I would like to. Uh, reiterate comments that were made by, by council members that, that were made, they were removed before the permit was approved. And I would like the record to reflect that on March twenty-eighth, before the last hearing, we filed a letter with the council. Asking that the council denied a request to remove the oak tree in the corner. And an earlier iteration of the plan that had been filed showed a driveway alignment that actually preserved that. This was filed with the mayor and council on March twenty-eighth. That same oak trees removed on April one. And I, I, I'm not going to question the merit of the view, uh, you know, what the applicant said, but in my mind, that is awfully coincidental. I am going to hand these out just for the record so that the, um. Uh, the council members can see, we, we argued the merits of why that code was ineligible for removal. Uh, the council members can see, we, we argued the merits of why that code was ineligible for removal. Under the county tree standards. So this was not even given. Even though it may have been approved for removal, recommended for removal by the town arbers, that decision ultimately rests with the council. And in our mind. We had a very good case to make for its preservation. So we are very concerned that it was removed and the circumstances under which it was removed. Uh, there is a lot of information in this letter, uh, of the tree issue that I'm referencing right now is on page six, and with your okay, we'd just like to hand off. I also would like the council to look one at time at the layout that has been provided. Or proposed for the. Replacement tree plant. And as you have noted, there is a, there is a. Clear green, hence it's being provided on one side. My clients are on the other side of this property. The tree that was removed, the large oak in the front, the one that we were going to, uh, ask that the council preserve is located here. We sent this sketch to the applicant, uh, I believe last week, uh. Asking that replacement trees for the trees that have been removed, uh, which have been mentioned. That there be a Japanese maple located here, a sweet. Okay, magnolia at this location, and now we see this collie and a white oak. And then keep these trees so that you would have a similar type of, uh, bearing, mean, buckering, green screening. That, that's being provided on the other side. It's not as dense. But it does compensate for the existing trees that are being removed. And we think provides automatically for the fact that this large, very, um. Stable, sizable, attractive oak that was removed at the front of the property, uh, should, should, there should be an offset for. So I do have a handout here that shows the location and the type of trees that we are asking being replaced. And if I may, I would like to give copies of these handouts to, um, Mr. Gordon. There also is on the site plan in the lower right hand side, it's very difficult to read, a reference to an inlet. Uh, that should be, that would be addressed, the inlet that is installed, uh, by. By my clients. At the request of the former owners, and we just are not quite certain. It allows, it allows for drainage. Uh, controls drainage from, from my clients property to, uh, the forty nine oh five site. We're just not quite certain how that is going to be managed. It was done at the request of the prior owners. And, um, it, it is there for non-off purposes and. We just are looking for more information on how that may be damaged. So in summary. I, I am very happy that we're in much easier posture on this application. I appreciate the clients, uh, the, the applicant's frustration with. The time it is taken to review and get this application right. Um, I think. From my perspective. There's a certain amount of responsibility that lay, lays, lies at the foot of the applicant. Because, um, as far, as far as we're concerned, the original application did not meet the standards. Of the town code. We do ask that the council look at and approve the tree plan that we have requested, um, being. Approved as part of this application in order to offset the, uh. Trigger approval that was not authorized and to provide screening for appliance property. Um, one quick remaining question, their, uh, request, there also was a fence that was referenced in the original application. We had not seen any of those plans. We are requesting that any future fence application be provided to my clients. Fourteen days in advance of submission of any permit application to the town. Uh, and so. We're requesting. We not be in a position of having to respond to what that might look like after it's been presented to the town. So I think that sums up our comments.
And.
Okay, well, thank you for your sense of testimony and for these, uh, all this extensive, uh, handouts. And so because it is so extensive, I'm learning about them through the council, so they've asked you some questions. And also given a customer request in here so that she can make sure she gets her questions answered. Counselor President, sir. And of course, the, the applicant will have an answer to the, 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 the.
Sure.
So first for town manager, the, um. With the attorney talked about requesting a fourteen day notification for a fence permit. Isn't that part of our standard process, notify neighbors for that?
Yes, uh, so for a face permits, um. Pretty. Sorry, sorry, I had, uh, okay.
Well, it certainly pulled the adjournment buttons to the fence.
And the code provides, if there's a building permit open. Then it has to come, that request has to come back to the council for a hearing. So as a, as a practical matter, you know, get that on the agenda. So, so I guess.
It's gonna be at least fifteen days.
Right, so, so my tradition is. That, that particular request is inherently covered by the town processes.
If the building permit is still open, if it's, if the building permit is not still open, the code provides that it can be granted administratively by the mayor.
And that's, that's our concern. Did it not be administered through the proof without having anywhere else?
Uh, you mean like after the construction is all done and the permits closed and the permits closed? Okay, I think that's how this is. Thank you. Uh, and, and shifting gears a little bit.
But council president, uh, even though it is administratively, the applicant still must give the neighbor's notification. Before the permits is shut. So it was still processed, still covered.
I think the. Okay. Thank you. Uh, shit. You propose, uh, one, the, the proposal might have been this a white oak in the rear. To compensate for the one that was improperly moved to the front. Why do you want another, there are oaks in the rear already. Why do you want another oak in the rear? Instead of the new oak that they, or the new canopy tree that the applicant is proposing in the front corner. Near where that tree was removed.
If you are talking about the canopy tree here, is that the one that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Um. We were looking as, uh, to, to have this as supplemental screening in addition to, to this replacement of, you know. If there, if, if there already is a replacement tree being removed here. Right. We are, we are looking to, in addition, add some semblance of the screening that you see on the opposite side. Perhaps Mr. Gordon can speak more specifically.
Well, I can. Yes, please, because my question is, the proposal you're thinking, such, the sheet says. Your proposal to go in the rear corner, and I don't understand how the rear corner provides screening or what, this, this guy.
There's a sketch, uh, I just attached it out, it shows where we're proposing.
Oh, I actually, I call that rear. I call that myth.
Okay.
Okay, question answered. Sorry, I didn't get the second part. I'm all done.
Okay, that's our ball.
Yeah.
We have obviously got a tree plan that has been proposed by our forester and agreed with the applicants. And my concern is that you're proposing alternative tree plan, but we could have five neighbors, each proposing their alternative tree plan. We have to choose, what reason is there for choosing your tree plan over the forester's plan?
I believe this is supplemental for the foresters. It's not going to stay.
So you're saying that the forest plan insufficient.
For purposes of screening and you think for purposes of compensating for the trees that were improperly removed? We do think that what we're requesting is, is empty.
Right, and so again, I come back to the point I made earlier. Anybody, any neighbor could say the forest plan is insufficient and propose their own alternatives to it. And I still don't see why you've made the case that yours is preferable to our foresters.
I've given the reasons why I think it's fair and reasonable at times. Um, I can say that I've been before this council in other cases, at least one. Where there was supplemental, I think, reported at the request of a particularly effective neighbor. Um, so you don't have, there may be testimony from others here to find out what they're aware of. But this is not a question of five neighbors coming in with five plants. This is the neighbor who is most impacted. By the removal of the trees that A, have been proposed and B, that already have been proved without council. Prior to. So, um, I, I can understand your, your concern about not wanting to have a melee over, you know, competing plants. But I think under the particular effects of this case, this is a reasonable approach, and I haven't heard. Uh, yet at least anybody speak to why it's a reasonable approach.
But, okay, I think your client wanted to ask something.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer, we're not, these are. We were not proposing the. Planting a new tree is really what we're proposing, the replacement of trees that were taken down. They shouldn't have been taken down in the first place. And so, we're here talking, it's, it's green fence, it's just, it feels like. There's this tree, a bunch of trees have been knocked down, just the ones right next to our house to divide our house and keep us from seeing, seeing the new ones coming up.
But you go. But you do understand that the forester has proposed a plan that is meant to replace the trees that were taken down. In addition to the others that are going to be removed. And that's the plan that's been presented to the council.
I understand that he presented it, I guess, but I'm also going, going back to it. These, these shouldn't have been in the first place, not, at least some of them.
So you're again explaining that the forest is passing to the.
I guess I am when it comes to the fact that there's a green fence on one side and not on the other side, yeah.
Right? Okay, Jeremy, question. Okay, thank you, that's right.
Um, I'm just a little confused. The trees that were taken down. One was the Japanese maple, one was the, the oak at the front of the property. Where were the, the, were the other two along the fence that, that you're trying, is it over here? Okay.
These three.
They were taken down.
They're taken down in this.
Okay, got you.
These four were taken down by the contractors.
Right.
And this one is still.
Okay. Um, okay, so now I, I get it now, thank you. Um. So. I, I, um. I want to say one thing before I say what I want to say. Robin, I think it's, um, it's unfair, I think, to say. That, um, they are saying that, that, uh, our foresters, um. No, it's a few questions. Okay, no, everything's fair for now.
You'll be able to debate it later.
Then, um. Now, that was my train of thought. I'm gonna get this back, don't be worried. Um, thank you, uh. I, I guess what I want to know is, Tolbert. What do you think, what do you think about this? You know, the, the idea of these trees that they're asking to be planted? Is this a good idea in your book?
I'd like to think.
If I may, I'm not sure you have a.
Um, bro.
On, on most, uh, problems. Uh, we don't necessarily dictate. Where trees are planted unless they're specified in the building permit. Uh, you know, once I look at. For, um, building permit. Um, I think this is a. Um. An, an, an argument between neighbors. And the, if the council wants to weigh in on this, they should.
Because my question is. If, if, if the, um, if our applicant. You know, did plant those trees, you think that's a good idea? Is that a bad idea or a good idea? Or it doesn't matter? Doesn't matter. Okay. All right, that's all I wanted to know.
I, I guess I have.
Okay, that's fair. All right, thank you.
Is that, is that?
That's my turn.
Counselor.
Yeah, I have a question based on the testimony for our manager. I think there are general concerns about enforcement. Of the court as, uh, during the sort of course of the construction of this project, you have in proposals in terms of how. Tom Hall is likely to enforce and how should the council be advised of? This particular project for a time.
Yes, it, since there are concerns about the, uh. Code being properly applied, then, uh, the town staff can take a closer look at the property throughout the stages of development. We will, we can work with the applicants on being notified when major milestones are happening. We can have our building engineer Doug, uh, and then our code enforcement officer Wayne Ballard, uh, keep a particular eye on the property throughout construction. And then if the council wishes, I can provide updates as needed when different stages of the project are completed.
You sent us a time for questions for the.
Hold on, hold on. No, he can answer.
All right.
Yeah, you'll get a chance.
You, you can ask.
Go ahead, go ahead, council member.
Um. I lost my train.
Um. Yeah, eh, there are a couple, a two, three stages in which there is, there is already, uh, intervention from the town staff, right? Could you remind us what those are?
Yes, so specifically, um.
There's the wall check.
Yes, the wall check, the height check surveys. Uh, are, are two of the big ones, yes.
So those are the two natural points when that, yes, there's intervention.
And then you're proposing an additional.
Yes, uh, so if the council wishes, then I'm sure the applicant would be happy enough to say, inform us when any tree cuttings are occurring. Uh, or when, um. Certain, uh, other bits of construction and sure they'd be happy to keep us updated and. Uh, let us know when things are happening so we can send out people to inspect the site and of course the code allows us to. Uh, inspect the premises as we wish throughout construction. Thank you.
That probably the decision. Yes. Did you, did you have a question? Okay, counselor, a rollback. Do you have any questions?
Yes, um, so I wanted to go back to what the attorney was saying about this inlet. And I was hoping that she could explain it to me a little bit more.
Actually, what I have is a question, um, on the site plan. Uh, the lower right hand side, there's a reference that says, uh, inlet, uh, to be. Something like addressed at construction, um, and I don't, I, I, I believe that that is the inlet that I was referencing. Uh, the photographs that I showed. And I just was, my question really is from the applicant. Is that the location of that inlet? And can you explain what the, um. What the tree that will be during construction? We're concerned that it's going to be blocked and there's not going to be the runoff that was anticipated.
Is that the natural flow from the neighbor's house that goes down right now?
Correct.
Can I answer that question? Sorry.
Yes.
So, yes, when we did our survey of the property, we did identify the existing inlet in between this property and the property to the right. Um, and in the back left of our property is the outfall of that pipe. Uh, pretty much where we have our new outfall for the stormwater planter. The note the attorney is referencing is, um. Existing inlet to be adjusted as needed. We are not removing that inlet. We are actually picking that inlet up now because the existing hall fall pipe goes through. Where the new house would go, we're actually picking that drainage up from the adjacent property, which is approximately. One thousand four hundred fifty six square feet, and we're taking that to our stormwater planter. Um, so it's being taken care of with our stormwater management. We're not getting rid of that inlet.
And so then, like, during construction. And so then, like, during construction, if you have to put up like that big fence or whatever, that won't hold back that water, that'll.
The.
Can you cut it to make the, the drainage go through or something?
Yes, the, the inlet, the self fence will be on our side of that inlet. And it will be maintained during construction, if there's any debris or anything that gets in there, it should be maintained.
Okay, okay, that's all I, oh, the other question, can you plant like? It's, I mean, this might be a dumb question, can you plant like an already big sized tree? In general, like, could they do, you know, because a lot of these, when we, when we do these, these, um. You know, we plant trees in order to take away the trees, but the, the trees that are planted are these just tiny things that they're hoping will even take to be a tree. Um, is there a way to, um, plant like a already mature tree?
So you're, you're quite, who's your, isn't your question to the attorney?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's. But right now, the council is asking questions to the, the neighbor's attorney.
I, I know, does she know, do you know if you can plant like mature trees?
I, I do know that, um, in the development industry, we can specify the size of a tree to be planted. Sometimes it's the diameter of the tree, sometimes the size of their root ball. Beyond that, I, I can't really give you additional information, I don't know what the. You know, maximum reasonable size would be, but there can be those specifications.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. So we will now open the floor for further public comments, anyone in the room which is to comment. Okay, come, come forward, allow it to say, say your name.
Hi, I'm Lily Liquid, is it, and I'm at forty-eight twenty-three Cumberland. Um, and I just want to make just a, a small comment, which is we're, we're talking about this issue of the treatment of the overall development. Which of course upset us all and, and so on. And the reason those trees were originally going to be removed is because in the original plan, there was going to be a driveway that was going to go back. To a garage, now that plan has changed, so these trees were removed for no reason at all. And we have lost our green fence for absolutely no reason at all, and it's not going to be replaced. I just would like to raise that to everyone's attention so that you can understand why, and I'm sad. Thank you, thank you.
Let me answer that question. Your attorney will be able in rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else who's here or wants?
I'm Lucy Gaiman, I really have thought said it one night also, uh, actually, who. Uh, Kabir and, uh. My town manager, I've been asked a bit what my question is, um, so. And the past is that the builder here, the applicant, has said that his contractor, without permission. Cut down the trees, in fact, uh, we have his word that this happened. We don't really know what happened, whether those trees were without permission cut down. Then they are saying, my gosh, this Japanese maple was stolen, maybe in the middle of the night. I think this would not be, we did not go, we did not fly to a court to see, I'm sure. Uh, attorney would not accept that, so I am worried about the future. We have, I think, a building, an applicant with questionable following the rules. And we have really good rules, we pass councils, the present council about pipe, about setbacks, about. Stormwater and in the past, we had somebody, Jeffrey, we will remember this, Larry. Who worked for the town and he used to go around every day and check on everyone on the building sites. And to make sure everything was going correctly. And now, uh, how are we, the council, the staff, the mayor, the neighbors, residents? How are we going to know? Is this all being done correctly? You know, we have an example tonight of Miriam who came here asking permission, they had four trees cut down. Are, is that going to be our precedent, or is our precedent who's going to be, somebody comes in? And says, oh, my contractor set down, cut down these trees without any permission and. These building, probably a house that's worth a lot of money, and we're charging a thousand dollars per tree. That's what I want to ask the council, how?
Okay, well, this is a time for you to present testimony and hopefully you will, be, be considered when they make the decision. This is not a Q and A.
Right, 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 no, it's a rhetorical question. We're talking about this project, all future projects, and everyone in this town is. Going to be involved with how does the town handle. Buildings in the future to know that, you know, the stakes are made. You know, I think one of the years ago, we had a house that was too big in the neighborhood. But, so I'm just hoping that this will be addressed.
Thank you so much, any, anybody else? Yeah, you, you'll be able to, is anybody else, okay?
So, so. Chris Ford, the neighbor. Of course, I agree with my wife, um, I just, just, it does, to answer the question. This sketch was thrown together on a plane in hopes that we can kind of resolve something, but. We're, we're very happy to get him going instead of kind of sitting there for a while and all the other things with the town done. He's done this, we appreciate, sorry, that's what I was saying, um. The key thing on the trees, this is, we were really hoping to facilitate some return. For that green barrier there, because these trees were cut down without permission, they didn't need to go to satisfy the overall thought. And, and this specific plan just seemed like roughly in line with. The type of trees that were taken down and where they, and where they were, but it's not super specific. And I, I called up our, um, our landscaper and they said either the types of things will probably live and look good. Spirit, you know, I think everyone wants to look good, but it, it does feel like, it shouldn't. Have a situation where someone knocked down a bunch of trees and don't need to go down, they benefit from it, we, we're hurt by it. It's just like, okay, there are those, and I think that's what we're asking for, something to kind of make, make us whole, that's it. And, and seriously, so, um, not so super standard, but that's.
Mr. Chairman, yes. Uh, Kumar Vaswani, Kumar energy.
Yes, thank you, uh, Kumar Vaswani, Trent Street, um, going back to those tree removals. I think the attorney for the applicant said that a police report was filed for one of them. Is that true?
Right.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, we'll make sure you do, we'll get a copy, it takes five to seven days, but he filed it on Friday.
And who filed it?
The, the applicant, the property owner, we don't.
Okay, thank you, and then my other question is when the contractor. Removed the other trees, is that contractor a licensed tree expert?
Yeah. It said, you know, said he has license.
Because most licensed tree experts know that this town requires permit to remove a tree. And I'm just wondering. You know, how that happened.
Okay, well. Again, this is a time for testimony.
Well, I will just add, during, during the incident, I did make it clear.
Okay, well, perhaps that will be addressed in the rebuttal.
Okay.
But as an aside, as an aside, Mr. Chair, we'll try to find out, the staff will try to find out for you. This is public information.
Okay, thank you, and the, the other comment I have is that I think there is ample, uh. Ways that the town could maybe adjust its processes or systems to try to ensure that. Incidents like that don't happen again, but, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, Russell Green, are you there, Russell?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, thank you to the council for, uh, your careful consideration as always. I want to associate myself with the comments of, uh, Chris and Lucy and the neighbor. Uh, who went before Lucy, whose name I didn't catch, um. I also wanted to, to make a couple of separate points, one, well, maybe not separate, you know, I think Lucy's point about. Future applications is actually extremely relevant to today's application in the sense that. You know, anything that we do today sets a precedent that other people will look on, at in the future. And so I think that, you know, concerns about precedents that we set are, are very relevant. You know, concerns about future applications is very relevant to this particular situation, whether we enforce our. Our rules and, and how we enforce them. Uh, and the separate points I wanted to say, um, related to, um. Uh, Kabir's point on the town and the, the discussion on the town monitoring. Uh, I, I know from my recent experience, I, I live on Cumberland next to the project that was just recently approved. Um, that contractors can move very quickly, uh, once they get. Permission from the town, maybe even before they get permission from the town, and that, uh. It would be reassuring if the town could likewise communicate with. Uh, with neighbors about things being done properly, uh, maybe, maybe that's incumbent on the neighbors to seek. Better communication, but, but in my experience, there wasn't. Uh, a lot of experience about whether the things that have been requested of the, by the council, special things were actually done or not. Um. Last point is these, uh, stormwater barriers that are put in, uh, according to county code. It's not just a fence, it's also a two-foot trench that goes along it, so when you're thinking about the impact on. Uh, trees, something that I discovered with the project next door to me is this trench is going to cut through. Basically, that, you think of that line as basically cutting off all tree roots, uh, uh, down to two feet that go along it. Uh, that's all I wanted to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Okay, thank you, this concludes the public portion of the hearing, the record is sent out. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So Matt Gordon from the law firm Self-Indemnaggish for the record again, yeah, for the applicants. Um, and I think I'll, we'd have to speak to like the specifics of, um, why they selected the, the tree plan and the replanting plan that they did. Um, that he was going to address earlier, um, but I'll, I'll be really brief, I think, I mean, the, the point is. You know, a mistake was made, we all acknowledge that, it's unfortunate, if you think we can live in a world where these mistakes won't be made again. God bless you, but I'm telling you, these contractors, they make mistakes, people, that's just what happens. Um, but in terms of the actual plan, the replanting plan. Um, I think at the end of the day, there has to be like an objective standard, you know, for due process, it's on notice, they prepare a plan. And the town garbage approves it and it meets the standards. Because if you bring in the subjectivity of like, you know, neighbor X thinks that you should have planted these types of species in this type of location. This type of variation, um, you, you've set up a standard where property units are not going to be able to. You know, understand what is going to be acceptable, um, so I think you either meet the tree code or you don't. This application meets, it meets the town's standards, um, so if you're talking about screening and, and bothering. You know, the town has the ability to adopt a code that talks about bothering, because that's really what we're talking about, neighbor properties bothering is different. Than meeting the town's code, um, and in terms of future, um, important, you know, the discussion about enforcement. You know, we've already talked about the enforcement powers that the town has to address these, this, these types of issues. That's separate and apart from whether the current plan complies with the town requirements, the staff has said it does. And that's why we're asking for approval, whether the town is going to take enforcement action, they can do that, but that's a separate issue. It's not going to justify requiring the property owner to, to replant in a, in a way. That is inconsistent with what your standards are, what, what they've understood. Um, and then the last point on that I would say is they're going to have a bond, um, for this tree plan. So the town will have ample opportunity to ensure that they, uh, they follow through. And hopefully the contractor, I'm sure it's already, he or she has already been sternly spoken to. Um, if not, if you're not looking for another contractor to finish the project. Um, will understand that there will be significant ramifications that already happened. Um, in order to get off that bond, they have to comply with these requirements until the project. Um, has approved, if this body, um, recommends approval tonight. Um, so with that, I would say, you know, we, we agree with your staff, it meets all the requirements. They followed all the steps, it's been an arduous process, they've had to revise the permit a number of times for things beyond their control. Um, had the permit been approved in January before the town changed its code, we probably wouldn't be talking about these trees being removed without a permit. Because they would have had a permit, but they hadn't revised their plans continuously. And there was a miscommunication with their contractor, he did, he made a mistake, that's the role of people, make mistakes. Um, we don't, can, can you get into the, just the tree planting, your decision on how you designed it? Yeah, as well as on that, and, and.
Leverage what, um, I'm saying, and I was supposed to present April, was that April first? And I was supposed to get my approval that day, it's not my fault that, you know, they, uh, uh. The staff unfortunately was not able to catch certain things. We, I had a meeting on March sixth, I provided a detailed summary of all the steps. And I was supposed to present, I wanted to, to sign to present on, was that March first? And then because I got my approval on, on February thirteenth. And then two days before the, the March meeting, the manager came to me and he said, oh, look. The deadline has changed from the fifteenth to the tenth, you were out by three days, so you cannot, you cannot, uh, present at the March meeting. Then from that, on March sixth, I went with my wife, I met with the manager. I said, okay, do you have everything, am I, am I going to present? He said, yes, verbal, then I didn't receive a confirmation by email, I follow up two days later. No confirmation, then finally, on the fourteenth, I got a complete, a brief confirmation that I was going to present. Everything was done, everything was fine, and, 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 uh, on April first, I was going to present. Then, two days before the meeting, you know, then he tells me, oh, look, you have a, you have a variance. Okay, I have a variance, he gave us twenty-four hours to fill out the document to, for the variance to be able to present in the middle of April. And then, two days after that, it was Saturday, Sunday, on Monday, oh, look, you have another variance. You know, and it's like, it was not my fault, I mean, we did exactly what we were asked to do. And then, you know, a, 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 at the end, we found ourselves with, with a million issues. Honestly, you know, these things about the trees, I feel really bad about it. But it's from, from March twenty-seven to April third. I found myself in a situation where I was comfortable to present in front of the meeting with no variance. No nuances whatsoever, to having to find a lawyer, because my neighbor had found, had a lawyer. To having to find, to talk to a, uh, uh, civil engineer and trying to redesign everything. Talk to the architect, that was six days or nine. Obviously, he stays up and when, when you are under pressure, on top of that, obviously, I have my own job. That, so, you know, and we feel really bad about it, I mean, I feel very, very bad about it. But unfortunately, it happened, and I, I cannot do anything about it. And then about the four trees that were cut, I just want to make sure that it's clear, one thing is clear. Is that the one in front, uh, the ten-inch oak tree. We are replacing, as I said before, with two kind of retrees in front. And then five inches kind of trees in front, and then the tree, they were a, a little bit towards basically. Uh, the middle, we are replacing them with three trees. It more towards the back because it's supposed to give privacy to both property. So, it's not that we don't create this, this, uh, sort of imaginary, uh, green fence. We are, we are creating, it's just the neighbor is asking for three additional, uh, trees on top of the twenty-one. That I have, and he already specified which type of trees need to be planted. Uh, I mean, basically, this is the situation, and then I would add one more thing, is that the three trees, the one in front. With the change from a, a car garage in the back. with the change from a car garage in the back to a two-car lot in the front. If I hadn't cut it, could have been still be there. But the three trees that have been cut in, sort of in the middle, those would have been cut no matter what. Because, I mean, if you guys see Dr. Feder, basically, he pointed out where the trees cut it were. Basically, they are really, really close to our stairway. You cannot, you cannot build an entire house and then have a tree disclosed to the house. I mean, it's not going to happen. I mean, we would have asked, no matter what, to cut, to have those three trees cut down. And on top of that, we're talking about five inches tree. We're not talking about a 30 inches oak tree or so on. We are talking about three, five-inch trees. I mean, it's, I don't feel like that is really, is such a big deal.
Thank you so much. This concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of the law and may vote on the application. Now I'll turn it over, this over to the council president to lead the discussion.
Everyone, we've heard a lot of testimony, a lot of information to process. First thing I'd like to highlight or propose, everyone, is in many ways, I think this reflects the success of our code changes over time where this is not requesting any variances for height or any other variances. So I think we've been making progress. I appreciate the applicants making changes. I certainly also appreciate that it's been frustrating to see some things change as you go along. That's the one more comment, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. The trees that were incorrectly removed. We believe that those mistakes, mistakes happen, but our objective town code says that we impose a fine and we can require that the trees be replaced. Seems reasonable to me to request that trees acting as a buffer between the two houses be replaced. So that's certainly is where I'm leaning. I'd like to go around that support.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. First of all, as has been apparent in the discussion tonight, the town's plans have, the homes, plans for the home have changed substantially in the last month. Protein from the document itself now, since April 3rd, we have undertaken substantial revisions for proposed code. These include restructuring living space, eliminating the entire third level of the home, removing town experts, including defense from the application to accommodate our neighbors' concerns. There's now no fence. Completely removing the garage and significantly reducing the driveway. So this is all in the last month. And that's also eliminated the variances that have been there in the last time. So a lot has been done to both satisfy the town code and also satisfy the neighbors. They've really tried hard to do that. As I heard the plan tonight, the oak is being replaced by two substantial canopy trees. Their maple is relevant, of course, that was a preference. But they're going to serve certain same function. They will almost, because of their size, they will quickly provide a screen for the neighbors in the same way that the oak did. And I think that is a substantial concession for what happened. Yes, the tree was removed inappropriately. They will be fine. But that is a bigger loss for the neighbors because the screen has gone. Guido and his wife are trying to fix that by providing trees well above inside the normal size of trees that require to create a screen. So I'm happy with the plan for that reason. I think they've done their best to accommodate neighbors and I'll stop.
I think, you know, I guess as I'm sitting here and listening to this, the conversation, I can only think of one thing in Hebrew. It's called shalom vait. For those of you who don't know what that means, it really means just doing the right thing for each other, you know, being good neighbors. And I think what we need here is a little shalom vait. And I think you need, I think our applicant needs to plant, replant the trees. And everybody needs to shake hands and they live next door to each other and you need to work it out. And if three trees help do that, I guess I would push the council to mandate that, go along with what Steve has sent. So that's where I am.
It's a permit that's in compliance with our code. There are no variances. That's the starting point. You know, this is the personal statement. And I do regret, and I'm sorry that the applicant faced tremendous challenges as we revised the code. And you face varying items. This is my personal, if anyone has a connection, it's my personal. I personally regret that, that you went through all of that. And, you know, clearly very frustrating and as a result frustrating for the town and for the neighbors as well. It's a long drawn out process. It's still, so I truly regret that. I think that the applicant's attorney and Guido Rakhiali made compelling points about, you know, to what extent do we have the right to require those trees? I do want that. I think that's a challenge. Question is, do we have the right to require it? You know, that I'm not clear on. I think the court has a fine for when trees are taken down, even though they were errors. There is a fine. So we are able to apply the fines. But can we replace those trees? I'm not sure whether we can require that. And that's unfair to me. I think we're in deliberation, so. You know, that's a question I have.
I think it's part of our town staff. So, yeah. The penalty provision for removing a tree without a permit. Section 182, item 14 of the town code, which required, which would, which provides that it is subject to a fine of $1,000. That penalty provision does not include a mandate of replacement. However, under section 182, item seven of the urban forest ordinance and 182.8, subparaphrase F, the council is empowered to impose replanting as a condition of permit approval. And when replanting is imposed, the code provides that the replanting trees shall be planted at a time and location on the property in accordance with the approved replanting plan or is otherwise approved in advance by the town arborists. A replanting plan can be compelled in connection with the issuance of a permit. As the town arborist testified, what he is focused on in recommending a reforestation plan is the mitigation of the loss to the canopy, the town canopy that is presented by a removal. The town weighs certain criteria in its decision on granting a permit for tree removal. There are aggravating factors weighing against removal, mitigating factors weighing in favor of removal. And one of the mitigating factors is the extent to which any replanting plan posed by the applicant involves planting native canopy trees at least two and a half inches in diameter at the time of installation and chosen from a list of approved replanting trees, et cetera. So it would appear that any reforestation plan that is imposed is to be related to the criteria for the actual permit decision and with the goal of mitigating loss of the canopy, not necessarily for screening or buffering purposes. Shannon?
Oh, I, I got, like, I was kind of following you, Ron, and then I lost you a little. So, I mean, I think that, I think the town council can say, you know, as part of trees coming down illegally without a permit, I think we can say where we would want them to be replanted, right?
So in a nutshell, the penalty for removing a tree without a permit is $1,000 per tree. The code does not say, and the town can compel replanting under the penalty provision. So that, you know, that's one piece. That's one piece. The other piece is when you approve a tree permit removal, you can impose a reforestation plan. And Kabir's question is, can that plan include a screening or buffering requirement for the neighbor's benefit? And it's, it's my opinion that the primary purpose of the reforestation plan in that second piece is to mitigate the loss, the environmental loss of the tree removal, loss of the tree canopy and not the neighbor's view.
So as far as like what the neighbors are asking for, are they asking for like screened trees? Or are they just asking for a tree to be placed in kind of that same spot? Because that was a canopy tree that, that over, like, you know, that was their sightline. It wasn't to like create a fence, I mean, but with trees, but.
I'm sorry. It looks like the suggestion is for a sweet, bug, magnolia, and unelie Stevens holly.
And what?
I'm sorry. What is that?
So those are, like, those aren't screening trees, right? Well, I mean, it's not like a row of trees. I mean, it's, it's basically, I mean, I understand, like, when you look at those pictures of where that tree was, you know, now there's nothing, it's like desert, you know, dry land, like no trees, there's nothing really there. And so I can understand why they would want a tree placed back in there to break up the, the two different lot lines. I think, and like, you know, going back to the testimony about how long this process has been, you know, for the applicant, you know, it's just, it's, he talks about those seven days, you know, between the March 27th and like this April 7th. I, you know, I don't know exactly what happened, but I do know that when, within that time was the notification that the neighbors wanted to save that tree. So, you know, all that happened within that time. And then I don't know why, you know, we called for a special meeting on April 15th in order to, you know, try to be responsible to the applicant. And, you know, that ended up getting changed, but in the meantime, you know, these trees did come down. So it's a unique timeline. So, I mean, I think that we should enforce that, is my opinion. And, you know, I'm also, I'm a little confused about Bayland's report in terms of like, he's waiting for kind of a final stormwater management. Did you guys read that in the packet? Anyone?
No, I didn't.
What I read in the packet was that this proved the stormwater management plan with a couple of conditions which were partly correctness spellings. They were not major changes to the.
Right. So have those conditions, do we have, are those done?
So I might be able to help here, Mr. Mayor. I believe the town manager touched on that briefly during the presentation of the staff report. So Bayland Consultants and Designers, they submit a letter for the record indicating his review of the stormwater drainage plan. He raised three points. The town manager addressed those three points in bold text. And I believe that the town manager noted in his report that with respect to point number one, that approval from the county is required, that that could be sought after the town council review. As has been customary in the past, a condition of approval can be that no permit be delivered by the town until the county approval is obtained. Second issue related to slope of the driveway, which the testimony revealed both the before and after grade is more than 5% plus permeable materials are not required. And then the third, as Mr. Barr noted, related to the spelling error on the plan that's been corrected.
So do you guys think that we need to, as far as like the permit approval or looking at this permit, do we need to state something that we're waiting for that Montgomery County approval?
I think that's inherent. They can't proceed without county approval.
And then how do we make your?
We can prove.
We can approve.
That's how we say that the permit can be issued until the county has approved the permit. That's, we will say that.
Okay. And then who follows up on that?
Our noble town manager.
Yes. Okay, awesome. Perfect. Okay, those are just my thoughts.
I have a follow-up question, Steve.
Yes.
It's you, Ron. Which, does the fee have to be imposed? Can it be imposed in time?
I'm sorry, the penalty?
Yes, yes.
What do you mean?
The town dollars, can it be, can, you know, could there be a planting equivalent to $1,000?
Yes, the town's not obligated to impose a citation. The town has prosecutorial discretion with respect to violations of the code.
But does the site, when we say $1,000, can we say instead of $1,000, it's a planting worth $1,000?
That's a can of worms.
Interesting discussion. I'll try and move this forward. I appreciate your expression. Yes.
What concerns me out of all of this is that in the future, if somebody wants to remove their trees and we say no, then they go and have a mistake. And then, okay, so they can buy their way out of their trees because it's only $1,000. And I say only, that's not, that's, that's not fair. Because to some people, that's a lot of money. But I think we need to be very careful here. And so I'm just commenting that this is a concern.
That's valid point. It suggests maybe there's a competition.
So if a permit is sought and denied and then removal occurs, it's a misdemeanor. It's a crime.
Go to jail?
Yes, assuming the state's attorney prosecute.
If we said no, and they not.
We're just concerned about the future, I guess, opening the door here. That's all.
Yeah.
So in interest of trying to remove this board, I'm trying to see a compromise. I think it, notwithstanding all the different points, to try and get completely on one side or the other, I would like to see, say, I would propose two trees be planted. So this would be my motion, is that?
You mean to restore the tree panel?
To partially restore the Okay, so let me try and follow on my step. Knocked down my way.
Make a motion and then we'll make sure.
So legally and technically sufficient. And there'll be lots of additions even if we disagree with this compromise. But I recommend the council approve the permanent application submitted by Guido Rakhiali and Shamin Ashon Rakhiali. Apologies for pronunciation for the construction of a new home, property located at 4905 Cumberland Avenue. Property located at forty nine zero five Cumberland Avenue. With the following uh, conditions. One, that the county permit being um. Be received, the the. County permit be approved prior to the issuance of the town's building permits. Um. That the. Um, that. Any tree removals be uh, presented to the town manager for monitoring prior to removal of the trees. And in addition to the. Uh, tree reforestation plan presented, yeah, is planned two trees. Between their um, side of house and their neighbors to partially restore the. At the green that was there. Okay, is that, is that? The the motion is sufficient, Mr. Mayor, I. Looking at the tree reforestation plan, I think trees twelve, thirteen and fourteen were flowering cherry, redwood. Red bud and a great myrtle. We don't have in the record. The arborist's. Review of whether reforestation in those areas is possible.
But the you 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 did what we're not supposed to do in your, what you said. Trees as a screen. We don't have the authority to do that. We only have the authority by our code to. Reforest, basically to replace the. Trees that were there to.
I provide for it. I I hear you and I recognize I'm trending perhaps in shallow waters, but. It seems to me that. That we have the responsibility to consider. Um, the neighbors and what has happened and this is a reasonable solution. And.
Okay, so yes. You'll be able to debate a bit, so this is your motion.
But that's my motion.
And the tenant's race is slightly integrity sufficient, so now is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so now you can discuss.
Okay, I started it. Do you want to say any more, Kabir, or do you want to say something?
Uh, I I I think that. We can. Barring comment made by Ron. I think we can require the canopy is restored. Some of those conditions for trees to be planted proximate to. Twelve and thirteen locations, to be precise. And that they are. Of the canopy variety. For the canopy to be restored, I I that's what I understand that's all. Allows to do, so barring the question of whether for reforestation in that area is possible or not. I think we can. Make that a requirement.
So you want, do you want to make an amendment? Sure, my amendment would be to make them canopy trees.
The my amendment would be for trees to be planted proximate to. Uh, locations twelve and thirteen where trees were removed. To restore the canopy.
Let me, let me suggest another comment and it it might, we might want to open the record and have the arborist testify because. I think pertinent to the code's requirement that. The time and location be approved by the town arborists because the town arborist is looking at.
Yes.
Where are these trees going to grow the most canopy based on sunlight and location of other trees? And what's the best time of the year to plant them so that they survive? What size should they be when planted to have the best? Ca- capability of survival and uh. I, well, I, any other advice, I guess, what I'd like to give in close session?
Okay, the question, if we said to the talbot, we said, go back. And redo this and redo the the um, the tree survey, you know, tell us what, you know, make a make a new plan. And if he put. The tr- if he deemed that where the trees were taken out, that they get new ones, would that be okay? Would this conversation be over?
That that sometimes happens, that sometimes happens.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That and you learned his testimony.
Yeah, you're right.
We also heard that of four trees that were removed, three of them had to be removed because they're in the way of the house.
Independent of the driveway because approximately to the stairwell.
That's, so the applicant said that those trees that that were mistakenly taken down, correct me if I'm wrong. Would have had to come down anyway.
They were recommended for a minute, yes.
Okay.
Uh, the one tree that. Is bothersome, be very bothersome and it is very bothersome, was the oak that was taken down.
Right.
Well, that is not in the footprint of the house and and that fact, it could have survived.
And the applicant that is replacing.
Right.
And restoring that canopy.
Okay.
He is, he is doing that with two neighbor trees.
So does anyone want to make, and right now we're discussing the motion on the floor. Does anyone?
I appreciate Ron's recommendation, I think it would be. Useful to hear, open the record and hear from uh.
Yes.
Over again.
Let's start. Okay, so to do that, then we have to have. Motion to reopen the record for the limited purpose of. Discussing with the town arborist. Whether reforestation in this area was feasible and the interested parties would have an opportunity to. Anyone who testified tonight?
Anybody says, okay, so.
Okay, second.
So did you, you got the um. You got the motion by Mr.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so there's a second, is there a discussion? Hearing that, all this is beyond. Okay, so now we will summon, so.
I'm gonna summon the town arborist. And and to address my concern and assist the town arborist's explanation. I think a critical point to address is. The applicant's comments that construction requires renewal of these three trees. If that's true, then assumedly the trees cannot be reinstated there. But it is sorry.
But I would say. Twelve, thirteen and fourteen, there's no way to protect these trees. With this cyclone.
Will we establish that and then the closer?
Yes, so. So the trees would have been recommended to come out anyway. Regardless. Uh, I mean, it actually cyclane again, not with the dead. Um. The. I re- I, as I remember. Um, that was like an embankment. Yep. Um, so. I mean, if you find anything along this side. Maybe even closer to the property line. And. I wouldn't recommend canopy trees in between, I mean, they're looking for other trees, also since I told you again. Uh, now it's Steven Hall is not an native tree. That's one of the methods, bring her out and sweep and I know it's here. Um. So I mean, that would be my. Comments on landing on the side.
Okay, council, president, circuit, do you have any questions? So. Yes, so. In your professional opinion, it would be possible to plant. Two native ornamental trees in that general area.
That's small tree, or not, not canopy.
Not canopy.
I mean, nobody wanted. Uh, the neighbor wants.
Okay, that that's why I have, thank you very much.
I'm uncomfortable with doing it because it's the sole purpose of doing it.
Well, I think.
The purpose now is to ask questions of.
All right, you'll be able to.
To be, please. So. These trees would not provide any canopy cover, right? They are. So they are ornamental trees and they're. Beyond looking pretty, the only reason for having them is basically to screen neighbors.
Can we try what was there, I think, but.
Yeah, okay.
I said.
Say your question, that's my question, you may answer it.
I have any questions?
That's right.
This, this brother right there, but feather, you you do not believe it's possible to plant canopy trees in that location? Because of the. Grade and and magnitude would be, but probably it's very close to the house.
I'm disturbed.
So I I wouldn't recommend it.
Got it, and then um, you. You did not consider that location as part of the reforestation plan, why?
What I usually do on the reforestation plan, I think the property owner should have the leadway to do their own landscape plan. As long as as Ron saying is all good, they're fulfilling. The reforestation for canopy coverage. And that's, that's how I judge we reforested.
I'm disturbed. Thank you. That's our road back.
And um, can like a canopy type tree be planted and like moved? A little bit closer to the neighbor's house, so like even split half and half on their property or something?
Yeah, I I just think that's. There isn't a place on property where I would be planting. If it was my property.
I'm sorry, say what?
If it was, if I, if this were my property, I would not put a canopy tree. In the, in this location.
What if you live next door?
Well, it's not, I mean, it's my property, so.
What if you lived, what if your property was a next door property?
Uh, I I don't know, I I wouldn't want a canopy tree there, next, that close to that.
To to your house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, that's fine, is that it? Okay, so now we will have the town manager call. You you have a list of people testifying. So everybody who spoke, it has the opportunity, but we will limit their, well, the applicant can talk as long as they want. But the the.
Anything else? Yes, okay.
Okay, so maybe applicants.
And I guess they have, they can ask. Yeah, you have the opportunity to ask Dr. Feather questions and or.
Uh, you have the opportunity to ask.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that the point is that these trees that that are being, sorry, Matt Gordon, for the record again. That these three trees will propose for removal and recommend it for removal. If the state was to. They chopped the gun, the contract, they made a mistake, we did without authorization, but. So I understand that makes it a more complicated discussion, I understand your concerns in future. But I do think your code protects, you know, the court's great amendment code. Fix this for the next time, so we wouldn't have a difficult discussion. Um, but I think if the purpose, your authority to require something. Is for the native canopy trees, the way I read the code. So I don't think that it's requiring to replace a tree in this location where it's too close to the house. It's within the authority to really conserve the purpose. Um, and so I had talked with Guido about. He's already proposing two can.
One second, sorry, I I would like to say a a couple of things. And I would like to remind everybody, I have twenty one trees on the property. Of waste seven already practiced great. So, I mean, it's a huge number, I mean, it. I don't know, if we want to start comparing to any other property in town somewhere, say. I I don't think, I I don't think I'm grabbing the bottom fifty percent. And then that that's one. Second, it's just that, I, as I said before. We took out four trees. One in front and we're replacing with two, five inches canopy tree. Three are in the middle and we're replacing them with three trees. On the fence to create privacy. So I think I accomplished the neighbor's concern to create some privacy between the two properties. And then. Another things that I want to say, the reason why we have more trees on the left side. That uh, on the right side is also because our property level of elevation. Is roughly two seventy or so, my neighbor property is eight feet higher than than our property. But my neighbor on the left is at the same level. So we, I mean, it's, if we are eight feet under, obviously, I I'm I'm already like, I cannot see him. So but between me and and Mrs. Emily, I mean, there is more, eh eh, you know, we can see each other, so we need more. Eh, screen eh, opportunities. And then eh, the last thing that I want to say, eh eh, it's just that. You know, from the beginning, I I think there is a problem with the, with the code. And in fact, the problem with the code is about. Concern. We have different idea what concern means. I mean, the first time we met, they they are concerned about the style of my house. They're concerned about the fact that they had a two car garage, they're concerned that they had a driveway, they're concerned that they. Uh, was that, oh, there was a bush, then they want me to move the driveway on the other side. It's it's, we have different views, and we both, I think, were both right. But it's because the code is so vague. And so we find ourselves that we don't understand each other. Since the first uh, design, I went from the two car garage.
Okay, sir. An lapse of time, could you just speak?
Yeah, I'm gonna finish up quickly, so, so if I went from two car garage, one and a half, now a two car park. So from my perspective, I listen to the council members who say, oh, try to reach a compromise, I already reached a compromise. So I I've done a lot of possessions, I mean.
But it make you just speak to the trees, you said, books.
Well, we were, I was just gonna say, these two trees, the replacement trees and. Um, the art, the expert, the arborist needs to be for this, that was in keeping with the section. For the mitigating factors, D five, one eight, two seven, D five. Um, planning native trees, that was the intent, there was the, the one tree that could have survived, we all agreed. Unfortunately, it was removed near where the park was proposed, there's two native um, canopy trees that are proposed there immediately, but. You know, so that is consistent with the code provision. But the idea that these three trees that unfortunately removes rurality, but they were recommended for removal because they're too close to the house. That you can kind of come up with a way to to force that issue, it just. It doesn't make sense under your code, I don't, I don't see how you can do that in apology process. You know, we have to know the standards are, we can't make it up on the floor.
We can have the process one more time and we can put two great miracle like on the side of the uh.
Can you, can you bring it up right in time? Yours, just in a way. Marathon session. It's fitting for the the permit in the ten months.
He had page four and forty six.
We are just gonna get my work, but we we got the Marriott and I don't know, that quarter's a third of four months. That's only a million square feet.
I'd say there's a lot of political stuff behind that Marriott.
So if you can bring it up a little bit. Show the bar, you're kidding, scroll down, scroll down a little bit. I mean, we can put two great miracle here, here we're gonna have basically the canopy tree. Here we're gonna have the other canopy tree and we can put two great miracle here, so basically. The neighbor doesn't have to see the uh, uh, you know, the card part there and I think that could be. Try to put an end to this, you know, it's being months.
Okay, do you have anything else you want to say? No, I mean, they've been willing to compromise and I I do think it's no small thing, was it, John, today's.
Okay, now we're going to the council, before we have testimony. Citizens, council president, circuit, do you have any questions?
No, no, no questions, okay, that's sort of hard, you have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, you're proposing in addition to everything, two more. Who sold with Rob, thank you, Rob.
Okay, that's our road back, do you have questions?
No.
Of the applicant. So now the town manager is going to call. Everyone's for with the tenant turn. Recall any call in order, anyone who testified earlier to, and you can add up to two minutes.
Uh, Ms. Roosevelt, assuming. Would you like to say something? We're trying to figure out. Okay, who's next? Lucy Freeman?
Yes.
Kumar on Zoom. Chair Vaswani, this is. Kumar, do you have anything more than?
On the limited scope, on the limited scope. There we go.
We we do appreciate the offer of two crate murals, and what we would ask is that maybe located. Orner of the property to the mid midsection of the property, if you can see the site planning yet. So rather than have the two crate murals up here, I think it could be located somewhere up here along this mid portion of the property again. But in the same in the same vicinity where the three had been removed. So we we appreciate the proposal, we would accept it, but in the.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Mr. Ward. Would you like to add anything?
Oh, it makes a lot of sense, it's so bad. Oh, you know, it makes a lot of sense to resolve this, we appreciate what they're doing, we're not, but we certainly don't want to do that, who I can draw it, whatever. But it does feel like a common set solution that at least, of course, the committee. Council is thinking about, and I'm not internalizing these things.
Okay. Yes.
So. And I very, I very, very much appreciate your trying to, you know, hear us and 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 so on. So I want to express, I I hear the town code, I hear the reason why, you know, the trees that were in places have to be hidden here, and it's not about ornamental, it's not about shielding, it's not about any of that. But these trees did create a barrier, and they're gone now, and I don't need to create murals in the front of the yard. It doesn't matter, we didn't have that barrier before, so I would never ask you or make you plant those in the front of the yard. If they can be replaced in the location where there was a barrier sort of further along the bill, I now appreciate that there's also stairs there that is in the way, and so I understand that. If they could be put further up where we were looking at just a moment ago, then I would be thrilled. Um, and if not, then, okay, I mean, that's it.
Okay, thank you, and now the applicant has one last question.
I don't know, as I said before, I I think. We we went through four store one management plan. We changed considerably our plan. Uh, and we went through mistakes from the town. Uh, we we did everything that we were asked, and that was wrong, I mean, I don't know, it's it's a, it it seems that we can never please. The the neighbor, it's it's a, it's a. This is what.
Are you okay with moving the crack metal, crack metals?
I would prefer to leave them where they.
Okay. Okay, this concludes again, this uh section is public hearing, and we are now back into the, the record is closed again. And now, um, Council President is leading the discussion. And right now, the motion, there's a motion in the floor.
So. I would. Since we're we're discussing the motion, not a chance I would make, is I don't think that the council should be in a position to dictate in specific locations of trees. In a building, on an application, you should be a slightly bigger picture, look at it. My, I I I would modify my proposal to the.
So you're gonna, you want to amend it?
So I would amend it, sorry, I meant amend the proposal. For the the applicant to um. Add two. Native. Ornamental trees on the right side of the property in consultation with our town arborists. We just bring it back.
Okay, is that, that's your motion?
That's my number.
So, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally technically sufficient?
It is, Mr. Mayor, and I understand that motion to also include a requirement that the town permit not be issued until all county approvals are obtained and presented to the town manager.
Is there a second to the amendment?
And and that any tree removals be presented to the manager for monitoring.
Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, is there discussion on the event?
I'll have to point out that I was just reminding that great murals are not native or a mountain soul. So so it will not be created for us.
Okay, is there further discussion on the event? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, now, i- is there further discussion on the motion as amended? Do you, well, could we have the town attorney reset the motion?
We just approved the amendment.
It was a friendly amendment, too.
Yeah, so, well, I just want to say, I I do, I mean, the applicant did make a concession. We can make, we can, we are in.
We we haven't discussed.
We voted on the amendment, now we're discussing the original.
You're discussing on the motion as a man.
Yes, and I just wanted to acknowledge that the applicant did make concession, not in the exact. Location, but still made the concession. And and, you know, uh, absolutely twenty one trees, pretty significant, and so, you know. Again, I personally regret that this has taken so long and dragged on for so long. Twenty three now, technically, sorry, correct my. Uh, so, you know, I think all of those are. Factors, I think fundamentally, the code did not allow us to dictate the location, dictate that they provide uh green screening. Despite the circumstances of this application, so I I don't, I think. This is the best we can do at this point.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion as a? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. Councillor Roback, you voted to approve, right? Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody, congratulations to everybody, thank you for your time spent. The next item on the agenda is the Building Administrators Report.
Yes, at uh forty eight fifteen Cumberland.
I have to walk away if I get scared, that's my response.
Okay, okay, thank you, everybody. Let's, we need to proceed here. Can I ask, Mr. Lo Niar, Askland, Mr. Lo Niar, we're ready for your report.
Thank you. Uh, yes, forty eight fifteen Cumberland, the town permit was issued on March sixteenth, and construction has begun on that project. At forty eight sixteen Essex. The original town permit was issued on May sixth, one year ago today. We've contacted the applicant uh re- reminding them that they needed an extension. Uh, as of earlier today, I don't believe we've heard back from them, so uh. I guess we'll have to issue a stop work order unless they submit something soon, because the next chance to. Extend the permit would be the June meeting. Forty seven oh two Fallstone. Uh, the town issued a driveway permit on April fourth, that work has not begun. And at fifty five fifteen Greystone, the permit was issued on February twelfth. That work has begun, and also just to uh advise the council that we've got. Four uh possible permits coming in the next few weeks. Uh, two for tear downs with a brand new house, one with a variance in addition, and another one possibly with a variance addition, so there's four new houses coming in. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And Council President. Council President, Sir, do you? I have no questions, sorry. Councillor Rovar?
No questions.
Thank you, Councillor Heller?
No questions.
Councillor Gohr, love, Councillor Roback.
Um, so I didn't know any follow up for five five two nine Surrey Street. There had been like a couple neighbor complaints about trash in the site area, and then also that they started construction. Before eight AM on a Saturday, does it, does anyone know if they've been spoken to?
I did, I did call them. Yeah, I'm sorry, this is Doug. I did contact them at the last meeting and told them about the debris in the front yard, they did clean it up, they put it in a dumpster in the driveway. Uh, and as of, I guess, last Thursday, it still was uh cleaned up and everything looked pretty straight in the front yard. There's always going to be some debris, but the piles of of. That were on the corner has been removed. Uh, and as far as I'm working on a Saturday. The only way we can enforce it is when somebody calls and complains, because we're not working on Saturdays.
Okay.
But I did reach out and spoke, we're explaining to the applicant about our building times.
Okay, and so they're aware of the times?
Yes.
And they do have a construction, or they do have a dumpster permit on that lot?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, the next item is potential introduction of a resolution to establish a consent. And release for reuse of photographs in town media as recommended by the Communications Committee, Mr. Town Attorney.
Yes, so this has come before the council at several work sessions and council meetings, basically, the Communications Committee wants to uh has created a consent and release form for those under eighteen. Uh, so when their images are going to be used in the town journal, social media, other forms of town communication. Uh, a version applied by the, supplied by the town attorney was considered, and the Communications Committee went back and modified it. And so that is uh it where that currently stands, and also know that uh. Councilmember Heller can comment as liaison, and uh Chair Kaplan is on Zoom as well, if she would like to help.
Did she wish to say? Madam Chair, did you want to add anything?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Okay, um, Council President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councillor Rovar?
No questions.
Councillor Heller?
No questions.
Councillor Goodmore?
Well. Is this practically implementable, like getting every photograph taken, that's the idea?
Well, it's it's only for those under eighteen, so basically, if uh.
Are you in a zone?
It's the whole team.
Yeah, so uh.
I mean. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Is it practically implementable?
But why don't you ask the chair?
Madam Chair, is it practically implementable?
Or also?
Is it practically implementable, so the question is not really whether you take a picture, but whether you make it publicly available.
Yes, but I'm just wondering, how will you see the consent for photos of all children under the age of eighteen? How will you, you know?
Yes, so it wouldn't be that we're going to every kid, it'd be like a better example would be if a picture is taken for the journal by the chair. With the child under eighteen, then she they would, she would have to form with her the sign.
Got it, so in those moments, and then instances where there are photographs. Made available, we would need the consent.
Yes.
Is that in this resolution? All right.
This is just an introduction.
Fine, fine, no problem.
And so, but it will be, it won't be very difficult to do this, because.
Okay, no, no, it's a good thing, it's a good thing, okay. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Roback, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, council is prepared to make a motion to introduce the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All right, okay, so so uh the article, I assume, each of them, in conjunction with the. Chair White. Thank you, the next item is potential adoption of an ordinance adopting the F one twenty five budget is recommended by the Budget Committee. Mr. Town Attorney.
Yes, so as the council is well aware, over the last several months, the Budget Committee, uh, and the council, uh, predecessors have all met, have gone over. Uh, different iterations of the budget before uh it was introduced at the last council meeting, and so. That the council has um. Reviewed it uh at the previous work session with Council meetings, so they are aware of what's in, in addition, in the most recent town journal. Uh, with several write ups on the budget, uh, so the community is also aware. Uh, Councilmember Kumar is the uh Budget Committee Liaison, so if he has any further comments to add.
Just again, thanks to the council and to the council staff. Uh, we've had numerous discussions on this, uh, we introduced it uh a month ago. I believe we've received some commentary from, uh. We've seen a couple emails, but nothing more than that, please come to me. So I think this is now when we adopt the budget.
Okay, Council President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councillor Rovar?
Uh, we we also changed some fees, I I know, I got them to budget those two to then we try to um. Maybe in the future we can indicate that in. Process.
Got it.
Well, that's a separate document. We've been running the fees, but we did the fee increases as we discussed the budget, we did that at the same.
Right, they they have to, right, Mr. Town Attorney, the the fees have to be um raised in a separate.
That's how we've done it in the past, Mr. Mayor, with the schedule reservation. So have they done that for the? We haven't done that, yeah.
Yeah, we've budgeted. Right, so we have to pass the updated schedule.
So we need a schedule resolution of all that. Yeah, come on.
Correct, Council, is there any question? Councillor Roback, do you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Town Manager, is any, is any of them zooming?
No.
Okay, Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance uh uh for the budget. For the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And to levy a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions of section six two zero three, the tax. Tax property article of the Maryland Code as amended.
And I think we have to put the rates and then. So the the rates are in the ordinance. Councilmember Kumar asked me if he should read them out, I told him he didn't have. Okay, perfect, okay, excellent, is there a second? Is there a discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you, everybody. The next item is potential adoption of a resolution establishing a data policy, Mr. Town Attorney.
Yeah, so this has also been discussed at a previous work session and has already been introduced, this would establish a data policy in line with state of Maryland law. Uh, does our attorney have any further comments?
No, yeah, it is a requirement. Under state law to have a data security policy, that's the result of. Legislation that was adopted after it was discovered that jurisdiction in another county had disposed of personal records by boxing them up and putting them on the street corner. So, you know, presenting obvious target for identity thieves, so this policy will make sure we have certain provisions in place to help prevent identity theft.
That's just, thank you, Council President, Sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Heller?
No questions.
Councillor Heller?
No questions.
Councillor Kumar?
None.
Councillor Roback?
No, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, is any? Anybody in Zoom? Council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution establishing a data policy.
Is there a second? I saw. Is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Next item, potential adoption of a resolution to establish an opt out. compost program is recommended by the Environment Committee, Mr. Town Attorney.
Yes, so this has been discussed and previously introduced, but as the Environment Committee has recommended, they would like our current compost compost program to go from opt in to opt out, where. The town would cover the fees for all residents unless if they specifically opted out. I will, I know that Councilmember Barr is the liaison, and Chair Rubenstein is here, so if those, if they would like to add any comments?
Yeah, right, there were some questions when it was introduced, one, one was um. What would happen to the bins that uh didn't get used? When they were distributed, in other words, some people opt out and will not receive them, but other people see the bins and just not use them because they're not going to participate. And the answer is that um. Compost crew will uh reimburse us for all bins that are returned. Um, so as long as they can collect them back, they will reimburse us on them, so we will not have sunk costs on those bins. Um, they will, however, charge a small fee for distributing the bins to us, that that is.
What's a small fee?
Although you'll get to ask a question. Say your question. Did you have anything else? I'll leave it to Chair.
And then Mr. Chair, thank you.
Hi, Chair of our environment committee, the power of with what Robin said, that they will also monitor um the use of bins and, you know, within the first six months to see whether or not people are actually using them. So they're actually going to report information about all the uses of the new bins. So that's, and that way they'll be able to determine whether our bins are being used. They'll give them some grace period because there will be a period where people's behavior um change. Uh, and also we did this in compost town forum on Zoom. So that was like an information session if people are now viewing online if they want to, you can hit it up on the website. So we hope to do some edu- more education too when this program starts up so that people will, you know, be ready, get going. That's it.
Thank you, council president circuit. Do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, please, so um thank very much for leading the environment committee and coming up with some old bird initiatives. But I you have some questions about this. Uh, you you answered one. It sounds like what you're proposing is a six-month pilot. So anyone who does not, anyone who does not opt out and is not using their bin after six months, we opt them out and we stop paying for them. Is that it? Six-month pilot? Practically speaking of what it means, yes.
Yeah, I mean, so we're we're slightly different. We would inform, we would, we would call that person A and say, we've noticed that you haven't been using the uh the buckets for six months. Are we correct in assuming that you you are not, you actually are opting out of this program? And they'll say, oh my God, I didn't even realize where, you know, I will say yes.
Okay. Well, hopefully we don't wait until we're not paying for six months to pick up and without contacting them.
Right. I I imagine that we will be contacting them prior to six months.
Yeah.
And just to 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 continue the conversation, which I didn't add is that, you know, presently Prince George's County has curbside composting for the entire county. So, you know, what we're doing today is just like the leaf lower ban, you know, we're we're setting the stage, just like the LED streetlights, we're setting the stage for the county to do the right thing and and it's working. So we're we're making a decision not just for our town, but we're actually we're we're pushing for the county to do the same. And they are actually already um entertaining this idea. So seeing this happen is going to be a, it's going to be a big push for the town. So we're hoping to go a success story here.
The town currently has a free opt-in program. So do we know why people don't opt in? And why do we think that this will be successful when free opt-in is not going to succeed?
Well, it's a good question. Um, you know, having been co-founder of another project, you know, and previously a scientist where I see results from doing experiments, you know, studying human behavior is very complicated thing. How do you, how do you move the needle? How do you change people's behavior? What I do know is that behavior can change very rapidly, like when Obama said if we're never going to do gay marriage legalization and then at the end of his term, it was change, which is unseen. In my, in my personal history, it seems like I'm like that change. So behavior does change quickly. When it's going to happen, sometimes it's hard to know. Um, but my my gut feeling is like, for instance, uh, council member Heller, you said presently don't compost, is that correct?
Oh, no, I'm I'm a major compost.
Was it you, Hannah?
That would be me.
Yeah, that would be you. So, I mean, just on the spot, but I mean, not bigger, well, actually, I guess, uh, citizen. And I asked you why you decided not to compost, because it's a
I don't, I don't know. I I I I don't know. Like, I didn't realize when we moved that it was an option. I probably didn't know what it was.
Okay, okay, hold on here. So that just makes, don't embarrass yourself, council member Trump. Okay, but I think the manager wanted to say something and then I think we're ready for questions.
Yes, I just wanted to add one thing is as manager, compost crew sends me uh monthly reports on participation. And so if it helps the discussion, I can quickly go over the March uh participation rate of our current program. Is according to compost crew, we currently have two hundred and three active participants. One new participant joined in March. Of our people that are signed up, seventy-seven percent are participating, zero uh and zero were canceled. And last month they collected about seven thousand pounds of of waste, of compost waste in Somerset. And so that's their figures from the company.
Can I add one more thing to your question? Can I do it when my turn comes? I'm fine.
Okay. I'm forgetting where we are now. Did you and then you broke into all this conversation? Okay, you don't need it. Okay, do you have any further questions?
I do.
No, but but
It's Robin's turn.
It's Robin's. Robin is, Robin is presenting it. So you, uh
Okay, so
It's getting late, so we're trying
Yeah, I'll try to do it quick. Uh, so we have seventy-seven percent participation. What about the other twenty-three? Pretty good for me. Those the twenty-three percent are, is it kind of haphazard? It's like, you know?
It it varies each month and obviously some people are away, so they don't
Yeah.
So we don't
Been out that that
So basically the twenty-three percent aren't not always doing it. They're just sometimes not doing it.
Right.
Okay, so um who's gonna, will the committee be doing the calling? You know, like you, you you give Shannon a bin and she hasn't used it. You're gonna call her to say, hey, Shannon, you want your bin or not you want your bin? Now, um
I think that's
Who's doing this? Okay, town manager. That's a good job for the town manager.
Intelligentsia, what?
A lot of the vendors will be doing. We have, we have a vendor.
The vendor is going to call?
Oh, that's cool.
That could be an option.
Yes.
I don't think it's given a request.
Okay.
I think it would be a substantial new business. I think that that request is
Hundred percent.
That they're going to be doing the follow-up.
Yeah, that was one of the
Okay. Okay, um, what is it going to cost us to have the compost crew, you know, to deliver all these bins?
Didn't mention the fee, I was saying it was small.
Small.
I mean, that would be, no, hundreds rather than thousands.
It'll be thousands. No, it's going to be thousands to drop to just actually give everybody the bins.
The buckets themselves, the ultimate, the delivery fees.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so I don't want to do this anymore. Who's going to collect my bin? How's my bin going to get get picked up?
The vendor.
Okay, but those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilor Kumar.
Um, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say Steve, historically, opt-out programs have proven to be very successful. So four-one case. People have been able to save for time and because they, you know, don't, they have automatically given four-one. So recycling, historically, I think there's a lot of data that says because it's available, more people are So my belief is more people are likely to compost if this is available.
Do you think it's
You should discuss that.
Sorry, it's nine forty-five.
No, no, we we any other questions or comments?
No, no, no other questions, no problem.
Councilor Roback?
So has this been like floated out on the town list serve at all? That has this been like a discussion?
About what's going on.
And you've written the journal article too, right?
I've written, I've written a journal article, at least one, maybe more than that, actually.
It it would be interesting, you know, just to get people's feedback. Like, I just worry that you know, part of changing behavior is like having some skin in the game, right?
Okay, why don't you, that's when did you discuss it? Do you have any questions of the of besides? Now's the time for a question, then it'll be debated.
Okay, um, so my question is my question is like how how much more than like does it, will this cost the town like for all the bins? And then for the service to go around to every house? Five thousand dollars.
Take those numbers. Um, this, this is the town manager now.
I can pull it up.
I remember we talked about it, five thousand dollars more for the bins. I don't know about that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple thousand dollars.
Hold on, let him, let's let him get the answer.
Well, it is almost ten o'clock.
Incidentally, I have gotten a bunch of emails in response to my questions, you know, lists are not, you know, alleviated people's concerns. Talking about the opt-in, opt-out type of thing. So there has been some chatter about this and
And and and so when
Hold, let's let him, he's going to get the answer now.
Okay.
Although, while he's looking, what's your next question?
So how how is the, how does the opt-out work? Like, are, is there going to be an email that goes out from the town and then people will say no, thank you, and then we'll be able to construct it from that? Okay.
Okay, so we're waiting to get the cost. Okay. So
But he's just
He's just checking the numbers. We can discuss.
I found, I found it. Okay, so for uh this current fiscal year, uh we've spent, uh we're going to be spending about thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, obviously, we don't know how much we actually spend until it happens, but it's possible it will go up to about seventy thousand.
That's everybody.
That's a lot, that's a lot of money.
Okay, so you got that. Okay, do you have any other questions? Do you have any other questions, council member Roback?
No.
Okay, did any, I guess.
Okay.
So now I'm turning this over to the town council president to lead the discussion and
So I like doing pilot projects and seeing how things succeed more. So I I I support this initiative. I I am concerned that I I guess it's the Scottish blood in me. I I don't like the idea of paying for pickups that when people aren't participating, but that's the nature of the pilot. We'll be encouraging, facilitating, supporting. Um, one thought I had is civic engagement sounds, it doesn't, I don't get a feeling that we have thought out the communication plan to the town. You know, newsletters, flyers. It just, it doesn't, it sounds like we're we're still thinking about it. And and my my thought there is that we can engage um town's youth committee to both come up with some ideas and also help execute some of its communication ideas. I think if if they come up with an idea for posters or I don't know, a competition at Somerset Elementary School, that'd be, then they come up with some ideas and maybe that will also just generate some more interest enthusiasm and in the households for their
Okay, this is, this is, so so I I'm just maybe, Steve, your question for you, do you know, uh, this will, will this start on July one?
So certainly.
So a month from now.
Yeah.
Can it start July one? Can we do a wrap-up?
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea.
Just do a little bit of, and can we, we, this is my only concern here, we always speed up these things. When when you're doing the right thing, we are budgeted for it, we should do it. Let's not go becoming impatient on it.
I like
As you were ramp up, one one could quick thing to add on that is that I just, uh, if you've counseled, let them drive their jam. I think what could be useful is having us part the environmental committee, committee whole Q and A session between now and July one, a couple of them, just make sure they are advertised and people can ask questions and air out their concerns, lead up to the launch.
Okay, I would like to make a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Given the latest of the hour, I think what we best is to entertain the table in this motion until all time, sir.
Let me, let me try.
No, I think I'm ready to approve the motion, yeah.
I'm ready to approve it.
I think we should table it.
But wait a minute, wait, let let Robin try the motion and
Right, so I I I move the motion to try the opt-out pilot beginning July first and also seek
It's not a pilot, guys.
Yes, seek help from the
It's not a pilot. It's not, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's not a pilot. I'm ending it to a pilot.
All right, I'll leave it. Start the opt-out program on July first and to seek the aid of the environment committee in communicating as best as possible with the town about this program.
Okay, is that your motion? Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
It is, Mr. Mayor. As the manager has noted, the resolution currently says June, so he will change that to July.
So, so is that, yeah. Okay, so is there a second? Okay, is there discussion?
Well, I mean, I think that there, I think we really need to have like a there's a whole group of people in town that don't read the emails that go out and they also don't read the town newsletter. And they're going to be out of town and they're going to get something just showed up at their door and not know anything about it and be like, why is the town spending seventy thousand dollars on this this year? You know, I I just, I think that there really needs to be like a multifaceted, like, you know, campaign about this to go out to touch all different levels, door to door, you know, I don't know, but I think that
Friendly amendment to enumerate these uh uh pieces of communication.
But it's not a friendly.
It's an amendment. Okay, it's a amendment.
Right now, you're discussing the motion.
Yeah, I'm just discussing, I just, I just see, I don't know that it it feels like a little big brother-y and um and to me, and it feels like, you know, people will, I, you know, I think people who will be excited about it, will be super excited about it and want to do it. And I I just, you know, I I don't know that we want to pay for all the people that might not be.
Amendment, can I propose an amendment? So a a proposed amendment is that the uh communication plan that the environmental committee conducts as part of the rollout of this program include holding information sessions via Zoom and at the town hall. Um, what what else?
Can I add to that?
Yes.
I don't think that's I think
Help me enumerate what they are.
I think we need to have a flyer to people's homes.
Flyers to people's homes.
Because
What else?
They're not going to get it.
Flyers, what else?
What else?
Said email blast.
Email blast.
Email flyers.
Okay, that's good enough, right? So we have information sessions at the town hall.
Hold on a second. Councilor DeMar is making the motion.
Flyers to people's homes and an email blast.
Okay.
We really want
Second, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Can you please restate, can you please restate your motion?
Amendment, amendment to the motion where the communications from the environmental committee on the opt-out compost program includes the following activities. Email blast to the town, uh flyers uh deposited at everyone's homes and information sessions via Zoom and in person uh at the town.
Okay, is there a second for that? Hold on a minute, so, okay, is there a discussion of the amendment?
The the only thing I'm saying is that the chair of the environment committee is here and why not let the environment committee work out the plan? They they have most committed to this. They are most committed to this. And they really want it to work. You're giving importance to the life of them.
I agree with Robin. How, how many people came to the, how many people came to the um information session?
Not really many. Okay, I think probably just to adjust more slightly, I think email blast would be good. I think a flyer, because we did it for the leaf lower. And and putting some yard signs up in
Okay, yard signs included.
Okay, I would like to
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, to the chair.
You're not debating this.
Can I
This is, this is the council
What changes motion?
Right, yeah, go ahead. Make up amendment.
Hold on a second. I I have, hold on a second. Just so everybody knows what we're doing. Right now you're discussing the amendment.
Yes.
So now you wish to, do you understand what the amendment is?
The amendment, I do, and I want to change it.
Okay, what's your amendment?
I want to say that we kick this the the communications piece, we give it back to the environment committee and let them work on a plan. And because I think it's, it's, it's easy for us to sit on the sidelines and just do that.
Specific of that.
Okay, I would, okay.
What what's the exact language?
I think that, I think you guys need like a
Wait a minute, hold on.
You're asking about specifics.
Hold on a second. Council member Heller is is making her amendment. So, please
Okay, I would like to amend what Kevir said to say that that the, we will ask the environment committee to develop a that the, we will ask the Environment Committee to develop a communications plan for a rollout and, um, and await, just, just communication plan to the town for, for the rollout.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That's okay, is there discussion of the amendment to the amendment?
I thought that was an original motion, but I'll agree with it anyway.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Is there discussion to the amendment?
Well, I mean, I, I, I guess like, you know, I mean, maybe we can brainstorm some different ideas, but, you know, I think there should be an FAQ flyer. I think that, you know, I mean, like, I would not have combined the the talk with the B stuff, you know, like make it just about this, like short and sweet, you know, these people don't have that much time. Like, I, I really, but I, I think that if I were to go up and down my block and all the people that don't compost, I bet they have no idea that.
Okay, so. So are you, so it sounds like you're opposed to the amendment?
To what?
Right now we're discussing the amendment to the amendment.
No, no, I mean.
She is not opposed to the amendment.
I just think that people, I, I think, I just think that the town, like I said, seventy thousand dollars a year is not chump change.
Okay, Councilor Roback, that, right now the discussion is about the amendment to the amendment. Not about the.
Let me, let me just, Shannon, we have, we are requiring that the Environmental Committee have a rollout and a communications plan. Our understanding is it will include all of the components we've discussed today.
Well.
We expect that. We, that is our understanding. And that's the amendment, that's the proposal that's on the table from today. So we'll sort out that next.
Okay, so is there further discussion on Councilmember Heller's amendment to the amendment? Hearing now all this in favor.
Hi.
All this opposed. Okay, so now you're voting on the amendment as amended. So can you please restate it, Mr. Town Manager or Mr. Town Attorney?
Oh, my God.
Oh, thank you for saying that. It's a motion to, to adopt the resolution with the amendment of June to July and with the amendment that the committee come up with a communications plan, including the elements that have been discussed tonight.
That is that amendment, that is the amendment that you're now voting on, which is that the amendment is that maybe come up with a communication plan to the town that includes the elements discussed by the compost manager tonight.
And does that plan need to be approved by the council?
Well, that's a question.
So definitely by the council.
Well, it's got to be approved by like. Well, get it, get it to us by June then for our June meeting.
Yep.
Okay. This has been, this is a whole mess. What, yes, it is. So what is the, right now you're voting on the amendment to the amendment?
I, I have a suggestion, yes. So, why don't we, why don't we vote against all of these and do a fresh proposal and just vote in favor of that, so we don't.
Okay, you can call the question.
All right, so I withdraw my original vote.
No, 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 I, what I hear is that Councilor Kumar has called a question. All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment? I don't know.
No, no, no.
Okay, everybody vote no.
Yes.
Now, the original motion as amended. I called the question, but you're calling the question. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Everybody should vote no.
Yeah, you all voted no.
That'd be fine. Okay, now who would like to make a, a final motion?
All right, I'll try, okay. And so we move to an opt-out composting program beginning July first. And that the Environment Committee developed a communication plan that includes the elements discussed by council tonight presented to the council in June and will approve or not that communication plan to or approval by.
Okay, is that encompass everything that anyone wanted to accomplish?
Yes.
Is it legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, which way?
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just said. Yeah, can I just say something?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, like if we're sending out an email that's an opt-out, can't we also send out an email that's an opt-in? Like, you can either opt out or opt in and give people both choices? And then, you know, the people that we don't hear from, then we can go out and, you know, try to solicit them and reach out to them as well. Like, but if we're just saying you can opt out, like, let's have people check a box to opt in.
Well, that is what the motion says.
That's a plan.
So, so.
They could opt, they could opt in tomorrow.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
Can I address Shannon's question? Shannon, we it's, we are moving to an opt-out program with this.
No, I, I understand, but I think that like, when it go, when, because people don't know. And so when it goes out to people and it says, you know, you have the, the, you know, thing to opt out, you know, also if you're really excited about it, you can also opt in. I mean, you know, even though it's already an opt-in, you're giving people a right to check a box. And then when it shows up, they're not as surprised.
I think we can, we should discuss this when we do the comms plan. At the June meeting. I think that's a good idea.
And that way if somebody opts in in the middle of June, they can start right away. They don't have to wait till July first.
Right, right. It just gives, it gives the people.